And a yoga demonstration was held to encourage more people to exercise and live an active life. As part of April's Distracted Driving Awareness Month campaign, the Los Angeles Police Department will be actively ticketing those texting or operating handheld cell phones while behind the wheel. Drivers breaking the law will be cited with no warnings. Last April, over 57,000 tickets were written statewide for texting and handheld cell use. Nationally, an estimated 3,331 people died in 2011 as a result of distracted driving. And something even those who are not behind the wheel can do to help cut down on distracted driving? Not calling or texting someone they know is driving at the time. Councilman Bill Rosendahl has produced a video urging Angelenos to reject what he says is the costly relocation of the north runways at LAX. In a two-minute video produced by Channel 35, Rosendahl interviews Dr. Arnold Barnett, a professor of statistics at MIT. Barnett conducted a safety study using data from NASA and satellite imagery of the LAX North Airfield and interviewed pilots in air traffic control to conclude that the current layout of the north runway is extremely safe. The Los Angeles World Airport officials say more room is needed on the north side of the airport for newer, larger commercial jets to land safely. Residents in Pacoima have a new outdoor space that offers more than just a playground. Yana K. has more.
These kids are having a blast on this slide. The kids, along with their parents and other community members, are here to celebrate the grand opening of Amistad Park in Pacoima, a new spot where kids can be kids.
This park is actually for them. It's for them to, when they go on that playground, when they're there playing, it can be anything they want. They can be anywhere in the world. They can imagine and dream anything.
The opening of Amistad Park is part of the 50 Parks Initiative, a plan that will add more than 170 acres of new park space in densely populated areas. The goal is to reach into communities that don't have easy access to recreation areas and parks and-
Give them something that they can be proud of, something they can take care of, something that gives their kids an understanding of not only recreation but also health.
The park, which is the 11th park to be opened under the initiative, features a variety of exercise equipment, drought-tolerant planting, and LED lighting to keep energy costs low. All of this is made possible by a public-private partnership between the Housing Department, the Los Angeles Parks Foundation, and an organization that focuses on the health and well-being of young children, First 5 LA.
It's this kind of partnership that really demonstrates that working together, we can create something meaningful, we can create something accessible.
Officials hope that something meaningful will be created in the form of exercise and a healthy lifestyle that will last for generations to come. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
Over the past seven years, the Department of Recreation and Parks has added almost 660 acres of park space. And a popular facility in the city's 9th district is reopened again after some much-needed renovations. Cindy San Luis takes us to the Central Park Recreation Center.
One, two, three.
We were closed down for about two and a half months during the process where the entire gym floor was taken up, a brand-new floor was put in, which is significantly better than the one that we had.
Local kids took to the newly renovated basketball court at Central Park Recreation Center at 1357 East 22nd Street.
They're having fun already, and it's a beautiful sight.
It feels better to your feet because now it has cushion on it because the other one kind of felt hollow.
Parents are equally happy to see their kids back on the court. Several boys' and girls' basketball leagues call this court home. Other recreational groups use the space as well.
It's good for the kids. All the kids come here.
This is stage one of a project that is going to do so much for this facility and will make it so much better for you guys when you come to the center.
The gym looks fantastic. There's more renovations to come. This is a pretty old facility, so it needs to be upgraded.
Future improvement plans include new restrooms, repainting, new windows, and a playground area, which are scheduled to be completed by early May. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week. And in this week's list of things to do, the Alvin Ailey Dance Company returns to Los Angeles, the history of puppetry, and a photo exhibit focused on humanitarian efforts. The Dark Room Galleries presents the photography exhibit Developing Change, featuring nonprofit organizations using photography to accomplish humanitarian goals. The exhibit runs from Saturday, April 20th, to Saturday, May 4th. Developing Change validates the power of photography and its ability to positively change lives by reflecting much more than an observed moment. These are some of the images from the exhibit. The organizations featured include the Afghan Box Camera Project from Afghanistan, Exposing Hope from San Francisco, and Photo Kids from Guatemala. Dark Room is located at 933 Chungking Road in Chinatown. For details, go to drkrm.com. The LA Public Library's LA in Focus Free Lecture Series puts the spotlight on how the Turnabout Puppet Theater, located on La Cienega, headed by a trio of puppeteers who happen to be gay, impacted early gay culture and the course of American puppetry. The lecture takes place on Saturday, April 20th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the LA Central Library. Speaking will be historian J. Eric Linkswiler with special guests Tony Urbano, master puppeteer and former performer with Turnabout, and Alan Cook, founder and director of the International Puppetry Museum. The LA Central Library is located at 630 West 5th Street downtown. Go to lapl.org and click on the calendar section for details. A staple at the Music Center since 1998, the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater will return to Los Angeles as part of Gloria Kaufman Presents Dance at the Music Center's 10th season anniversary. An homage to traditional modern dance techniques blended with the new, the Ailey Company will perform three different programs of mixed repertoire with classic Ailey works and contemporary masterworks of our time. You can catch a performance on Sunday, April 21st, from 2:00 to 4:30 p.m., but you can find the complete schedule at musiccenter.org. The Music Center is located at 135 North Grand Avenue downtown. And that's a look at some of coming things to do. A tradition that began decades ago as a way to bless farm animals who worked the land has evolved into one that showers blessings on the region's beloved pets. It looks like an exotic pet adoption fair or an open-air zoo, but it's actually the annual blessing of the animals at the historic Oviedo Street downtown.
And three.
And Oviedo Street is where every year, prior to Easter, animal lovers bring their pets to receive a splash of holy water and a blessing, this year from Archbishop Jose Gomez. And yes, there was even a llama.
Everybody's so happy with their animals, and you see all kinds of animals, from a llama, to a dog, to a parrot, to a snake. So you see a little bit of everything here.
I like to hang out with other animal lovers, and I was hoping that if my dog gets blessed, she won't be as naughty. She gets into the laundry bag, and she gets into the trash, and she pulls my slippers off my feet and hides them, and she's a joy, but she's very naughty.
The blessing of the animals has been held at Oviedo Street since 1930 and celebrates the animal world for all that they provide to humanity.
They used to provide us our food, our help on the farmland, but now it's turned into both thanking the animals and to also bless our loved ones. I mean, they've become family now, and they provide us a lot of love and support.
It's very rare that I think that the church recognizes the animals and makes them a special part of everything, so I love it.
It's a day that's gone to the dogs, iguanas, and snakes, and it looks like their human companions couldn't be happier for it. It is believed the tradition traces back to Catholic Spain. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
on our kids. Thankfully, the Hall and Back Police Activities League is there. By giving up just one cup a week, you can be part of making a child's dream become reality.
Troy McCavlin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's city council meeting. If you'd please take a seat. Today's date is Wednesday, April 17th, and again, you're welcome. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Hello, Quan Buscaino, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Corret, LeBange, Sparks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, West, and 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can somebody capture that moth that's driving me crazy? Or am I the only one that see it? All right. So again, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Parks moves, LeBange, seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Wezar moves, Corret, seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 15 and 16 to May 1 and item 24 to April 19.
Without objection.
Further, items 17, 18, 22, and 23 are reports to be submitted from the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee. They should be held on the desk. And lastly, items 25 and 26 are Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee reports that have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
So without objection, we'll hold those 17 through 23 on the desk, and then we will be able to vote on 25 and 26. So with that said, let's run through the agenda.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 15 are items noticed for public hearing.
Cards?
So far, we have cards on items 2. Item 2 in the first section, sir.
Okay. Specials members? Okay, see none. Let's hold the one item, and let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Wait, wait, just a moment, just a moment. Two and, okay. 10 eyes?
Okay. The next section?
Mr. President, unless reconsidered with 12 members, the orders will go over for a second read next week.
I got you.
Items 16 through 32 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members? Mr. Buscaino?
Item 19 for Mr. Englander, and I'd like to hold number 27, please.
Okay, 19 and 27. No more specials. Mr. Wezar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a technical amendment to 21. Should we hold that on the desk or just make it now and approve it?
Why don't, can you just make it now?
I'll make it now. It is a technical adjustment and recommendation number four of the E and E Committee report to replace Fund Number 51A with Fund Number 51Q.
Okay.
We can make that amendment, and also number 33, please, called special.
33, special. Well, we're not there yet. Okay, so let's prepare to vote on these items, and we should reference Mr. Clerk the verbal amendment by Mr. Wezar.
For item 21, sir, yes.
All righty. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes?
All righty then. Where are we now?
Mr. President, items 33 through 46 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, and-
And, Mr. President, pardon me. Item 42 should be held for a substitute motion that's forthcoming. That's item 42.
Okay, so then we'll hold 33 for Mr. Wezar and 42. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 33, 35, 42, and 45.
Okay, so let's prepare, let's hold those items, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item 47?
Yes, sir. That's a matter scheduled for closed session.
Okay, let me check with Mr. Corret. What do we want to do with item 47?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 47 can be heard in open session unless members have questions about it. It's an inverse condemnation matter.
Any cards?
No, sir.
Okay, then let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the-
Mr. President, if I may read the recommendation for item 47.
Go right ahead. Yes, you may.
In the case entitled Tamara and John Christian versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $167,500 in settlement.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes?
All right, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations.
Okay, well, Mr. LeBange, the man responsible for packing this house. Are you prepared?
We're just a part of his responsibility for his guests, but we're going to take it. When the president calls you, you respond. Let's have a hand for Mr. Wesen, the president of the Los Angeles City Council, and Olga Garai, Deputy Mayor, Eileen Adams, the whole committee here, and the mother of Arts Week in Los Angeles, Miss Brazil, right here. Thank you. Since it's not Arts Week, it's Arts Month. Who else we got? And I just added something. Mr. Clerk, it's Arts Month. Correct it, not Arts Week, but every day is Arts Day, and it's beautiful to be in this council chambers, and I wanted to ask everyone to look up at the ceiling, and someone thought of that ceiling and put the art. Someone thought, as they designed the great flags of the Stars and Stripes, California, Los Angeles, art. Art is everywhere. And with our great general manager, who's really taken off, as we all know, in her efforts to internationalize the art scene in Los Angeles, it is very special. Give a hand for Olga Garai. Give a hand for Olga Guray. And I never not wear my jacket, but since I'm trying to eat better because Joe said I'm too big, I took it off there so I look better there. Joe Buscaino, who does the art in the San Pedro and Watts area. Good job, Joe. So I'm going to give my microphone to Olga Guray for starters, but I all want to say there's many champions in the mayor's administration, but the greatest of all is Deputy Mayor Eileen Adams. Give her a hand. She does so much. And Olga, I want you to, I want to say, I have a confession, Mr. City Attorney, a confession. I did get a D in art at John Marshall High. I did. But I made up for it for desire to be better boy. And so here we are, Olga, to tell us all about Arts Day in L.A., Arts Month.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Thank you, council members, for allowing us to be with you today. We're just thrilled to be here. Arts for L.A. has sponsored this second annual Arts Day, and the purpose of the Arts Day is for your constituents to get to know you better, for your people to come to City Hall and let you know about the great work that the arts community does in every single district of Los Angeles. And the Department of Cultural Affairs is very proud to be able to make those introductions. I know you know many of these people already, but en masse, we have, we had over 400 people reply that they were coming here today to be with you and to let you know how much they care and how passionate they are about making Los Angeles a better, more vibrant, more welcoming place to live, to work, and to raise your children. So we are just thrilled. We work with all of you. We really are very indebted to your arts deputies, who were very much part of making this day as robust as it is, and we thank you for your continued support. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Labange, who has been just an unwavering supporter of the department and of the arts community overall. So thank you so much for spending the time here with us today.
Thank you. And this, thank you, Olga. This very nice shirt that I have on, this T-shirt, was done by a contest that the art community put together. We have the finalists, Stephen Walker, Cleo Walker, and Andrew Colinga. Is that correct there? Where are they? Right now, come up and get you this recognition you deserve with this art. Put it on, Mr. Rosenthal. Where's the Walker? Where's the Walker? Andrew is the winner. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Where'd you go to high school, Andrew?
I went to Pomona High, but...
Pomona High, good job. All right, good job. That's all right. I got a D in art, too, but see what you did? I love Andrew. Give him a big hand. And Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you.
And then also, Mr. President, we're going to hear from Danielle Brazil, who is, like William Mahoney is the mother of water in Los Angeles, she's the mother of arts in the Arts Day movement right now. Danielle, please speak a little right now. Give her a big hand.
Councilmember Labange, you are absolutely an unwavering supporter of arts and culture and the creative economy and the creative capital of Los Angeles. And I want to thank members of the city council for sponsoring this day. Each and every one of you have been an incredible supporter of arts and culture, and what you see out here today are members of your district. We've got incredible people from CD 12, we've got people from CD 8 and 13, and Rosenthal, we've got Spark, we've got Lula Washington in the house, we have just an incredible array of what we consider to be our creative capital of Los Angeles. And there is a direct link with the work that these artists and community builders are doing in their communities to exercise in civic engagement. They came here today because they wanted to send a message to you, that they thank you for incredibly supporting their work, and they also wanted to let you know that like many other sectors, they're jobs creators, that they create opportunities for people to work in the arts, they deploy and employ vendors, they also bring people into their organizations. And I have to say, we did this little exercise when we were over in the rotunda. And here's the thing, how many of you out in the audience volunteering your communities on a regular basis? Let's just do a... And how many of you read for leisure? Come on. And how many of you, this throws them a little bit, how many of you exercise more regularly? Come on.
Ask them how many have a library card. Hold that up.
How many of you have a library card? And how many of you vote on a regular basis? We are an engaged group, and we are here to support the work that you do to make Los Angeles a better place. We do it through the arts. Now, I've brought a couple people with me today, just a few that are going to speak. I want to introduce them very briefly. Tamika Lang is a community investor from the Boeing Company, and the Boeing Company invests heavily in creativity in the region, and she's going to tell you why. We also have members of the Creative Economy Task Force, President and CEO of Otis College of Art and Design, Sammy Hoy. We also have Tyler Stonebreaker, who is the CEO of Creative Space. We have members of the Human Relations Commission of the City of Los Angeles, Evelina Fernandez and Lenny Borsten, who will talk about the role arts and culture plays in building cohesive communities. We also have NAACP Image Award winner and Emmy nominated actress C.C.H. Pounder, who will speak, yeah, who will speak to the important role artists have in bringing critical issues to the forefront. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Tamika Lang.
Thank you. And I want to thank the city council as well as Danielle and Arts for L.A. for their fantastic work today. I work for the Boeing Company here in California. We have almost 20,000 employees. A couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to host a few teachers, K through 12, from all different backgrounds, and they had a chance to spend some time with our engineers who are building satellites and doing just amazing engineering work. And we asked them to send us the top lessons that they learned from our current engineers that they could take to their students, and here's what they said. "These are not my father's aerospace engineers. They use creative, divergent thoughts instead of linear problem solving of earlier days. Students need to be creative in how you tackle a problem. They need to have the ability to communicate a vision in writing and present it to a group of peers. We need to teach our students the necessity of speaking, listening, and critiquing one another in a controlled environment where they can voice their opinions." And then finally, one of the teachers said, "I think the most valuable and profound insight of the day was the connection one of the engineers made to the arts." He described how important it was for his development, not only as an engineer, but as someone who could think outside of the box. These are engineers working for us right now. The arts have played a critical role in the work that they do in STEM fields. It's only going to grow in the future. We talk about our future workforce, the need for arts and arts education is only going to grow. So again, I thank you for the investments that you've made in arts and arts education, and we will continue to partner with you. Thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Tyler Stonebreaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today about the creative economy. As CEO of Creative Space, I'm here with Sammy Hoy, President of Otis College of Art and Design, and we speak with one voice from the commercial and nonprofit sectors, as a creative economy does impact us all.
Creativity and the arts mean big economic numbers in Los Angeles. The Otis report on the creative economy establishes that the creative industries are the number four largest employment sector out of 66 in Los Angeles County. They support one in every eight jobs or almost 600,000 jobs. Their total economic output is $206 billion, plus another $3 billion in state and local taxes.
This data does not tell the full economic story. For example, the vibrant cultural tourism of Los Angeles depends on our resources in art, design, and entertainment. However, the economic and jobs impact of cultural tourism is often captured in other sectors such as hospitality. My company develops real estate solutions for clients in the creative sector, but the revenues we generate are reported in real estate, not through creative economy.
So without a doubt, the creative economy is Los Angeles' native strength. It stands out as one of our best opportunities and best bets to further ignite and diversify the city's creative economy and culture in the years ahead. We hope that our brief presentation has provided you with strong reasons to continue to support the arts and the creative economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the close comments from the county Human Relations.
Hi, President Weston and honorable council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Lenny Borsten, and standing with me is fellow Human Relations Commissioner of the City of Los Angeles, Evelina Fernandez. And the HRC often works in the city's most marginalized communities. HRC staff is called into the centers of civic disruption by LAPD and by neighborhood leaders within hours of a violent incident. Our staff comes into neighborhoods as trusted mediators and to rebuild frayed social fabric over time. And because of this, the HRC has a unique perspective. Safe neighborhoods are not only dependent on law enforcement. As council members, you know what's needed, is a complex network of neighborhood resources, and those resources include a greater investment in avenues of cultural expression. Arts and culture have the power to strengthen families, build empathy, and foster community and civic pride. It is far more cost effective for this city to engage people in endeavors that create culturally affirming experiences that also promote intergroup understanding than to deal with the results of people who feel voiceless, unattached, and disaffected. The Human Relations Commission, in partnership with the Department of Cultural Affairs and many others, have established a working group on this issue. And we, Evelina and myself, as representatives of the HR here, are here to stand side by side with our arts community. The goal for Los Angeles is to become a city of innovation that creatively addresses some of our most difficult public safety issues. After all, we all know, we can't arrest our way to safety. We know each of our stories, that arts save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Carol Conne, also known as the actress C.C.H. Pounder. I wanted to harangue you about why we need arts in the public school system, but I don't think I need to. I think you already know. So just a quiet example, singular person, what it's done for me. Myself and Nelson Mandela and a group of other people, teaching theater to people who can learn how to vote without fear. 24 congressmen in Cuba with Fidel Castro and turning to me, the strange bedfellow, when the tension was in the room to say, "Oh, Ms. Pounder, what movies did you do?" And in my neighborhood, which, Mr. Weston, you are very familiar with, by showing arts in historical homes, just a singular example, and there are thousands of us who have grown exponentially because of the arts. Please join us.
Very good. So therefore, step forward, Danielle. On behalf of the great members of city council in formation and the great calligraphy by our creative artists, Don Albert and Ed and all the team down there, we hereby proclaim this Arts Day 2013. Good job. Good job.
Okay, Miss, Ed, I think you mean Mr. Arts Month, right?
We got it all. We got it.
But anyway, I've got several council members that would like to speak, beginning with Bill Rosenthal.
Oh, well, that's nice. Thank you. I was just enjoying this whole event. Tom, you're such a master of keeping people together and keeping us happy and keeping the smiles on us all. We live in a world where we can either put a frown on or a smile. It's as simple as that. We either see the glass half-full or we see it half-empty. We either want to inspire and make a difference, or we just want to be quiet on the edges. What art does is bring the best out of us. It grabs our creative juices, and we find ourselves doing things that we didn't know we could do. And when we're a kid, that creative energy just continues to build the foundation and the sense of value and the sense of worth in that young person. There's just no question about it. And my district, and I'm very humbled to tell you that Venice, you know, is one of the most eclectic, involved, and engaged communities, and some of the art groups there are phenomenal. When I think historically of Emily Winters and how she's fought for this mural business over and over, people from her group are here, Justin Yeffi, I mean, you know, she's terrific. But then my Otis guy, just come on, just come up for us a little bit of a second. Otis has been phenomenal for us in the 11th district. They get involved in every aspect of the district. Their artwork is everywhere. Their involvement with community and with children and with every seniors is phenomenal. So we love that creative partnership between our constituents, your university. You fit in, you complement, you add. And I am a little overweight now, which I need to be under my circumstances, and I'm moving forward, and I look forward to continuing to work strongly with the art community. You add so much to our great city. Bless you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if you could, if you could put Mr. Zine, Mr. Zine is here, put him on the queue. Okay, Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Tom and Olga, for your commitment to the art community and also the number of you who are here to support the arts in the city of Los Angeles. I am a living testament as well, how the performing arts has done so much to me individually, from, let me tell you, Tom, Dana Middle School, Damn Yankees, remember Damn Yankees? Guys and Dolls, and a number of other productions at San Pedro High School. It really made me a better person, but also had the ability to, on my public speaking ability, the reason why I'm here today is because of the arts. And I, whether you're in Watts, California, at the Watts Towers and celebrating Simon Rodia's artwork, or just recently, and Olga can attest to this, celebrating Eugene Dobbs' artwork that has a life-size likeness of Rosa Parks that's today sits in the United States Capitol, that came from San Pedro. Or whether you're in Wilmington, California, at the Wilmington Empowerment Center, where it's teaching kids the importance of art and they're not only showcasing their artwork, but they're allowing them to sell their pieces as well. And my son, who is an incredible artist and who is excelling in math, that connection between the arts and academics is so critical, and we need to continue to support in our schools across the city and beyond. And also, our number of artists at Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles. I invite everyone and encourage everyone to visit Crafted and see the artwork, and that has been phenomenal since the doors are open. What I want to, I want to show Los Angeles is, I want everyone wearing a red shirt to stand and show that we are the creative capital of the world. Channel 35, let's show Los Angeles. Give me a wide shot. There they are. Thank you very much for your commitment to the arts. We got a, we got a, we got a wide shot, Tom. Wide shot. There we go. Thank you. God bless you.
Mr. Englander?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buscaino, also a director, as we know now, calling for the camera shots. All right, we like that. Olga, I can't thank you enough. What you've done for the city of Los Angeles, you've brought in over $20 million. Now, $20 million, every grant that she goes after, she has to go out and match dollar for dollar with private organizations. So she's constantly working with different organizations and nonprofit organizations, philanthropy to bring arts and keep arts and expand arts here in Los Angeles, and what it's done for at-risk youth, what it's done here for this region is just incredible. Danielle, we recently partnered, and you came out to my district, and we started last year a nonprofit summit where we bring in all the local nonprofit organizations and teach them how to collaborate and learn from each other and learn best practices and expand on their nonprofit organizations. And we thought, what a great idea to not only bring Danielle, but to tell her life story, her personal story, about how she grew up in Park Parthenia, how she was an at-risk youth kid, and how the arts turned her life around, to look at just what one individual has done is remarkable in the city of Los Angeles. It was very well attended. We had hundreds of people there for hours collaborating and celebrating and discussing best practices and how they can work together and expand art programs into their nonprofits, and I can't thank you enough. We've, let's give her a round of applause. We've done a lot.
We've done a lot, just in my district alone. We've started off, we took our community service center that we opened up, and we looked at all the wall space and said, what a shame. We've got to do something to promote local artists. So we put a call for projects out of all the local artists to contribute artwork, not to donate, but to hang on the wall that if they wanted to sell privately to anybody who would want to buy it, it's for sale. And we've sold several pieces right out of my office. It's fantastic. All the proceeds, by the way, 100% of the proceeds, go back to the local artists. A lot of the artists have donated those proceeds to nonprofits locally as well. We've had two exhibits now in the last year in my office. Imagine taking a city council office and turning it into an art space where we've had exhibits. We've had 500 people show up to an art exhibit at a local council member's office to celebrate art, to celebrate community. It's been a great place to collaborate, to meet new people. And what it's done for nonprofits is, the chair of public safety, I recognize firsthand what it does for at-risk youth. The creative calibration, the collective thinking, the creative thinking that it inspires so many to get involved. The percentages, the statistics, the studies that have shown that if you get involved in the arts, the likelihood, you have a five times greater chance of graduating high school. You have a much greater chance of going to college, of getting involved in your community. And as we heard earlier, for those of you who aren't paying attention yet, and we don't have your attention, a high likelihood of voting. And so, I wanted to, real quick, if you could, I just, I wanted to share a personal story with you of something that happened recently, a tragedy in my district, and what the arts meant to this little girl. And it hits people in different ways on local levels with just individuals as well. You may have heard of the 10-year-old who was abducted in Northridge out of her bed, a true tragedy. And what happened to her was horrific. And we had LAPD officers at her house, guarding her house for a couple of weeks because of the media attention and everything else that was going on. And we have a reserve officer out of Devonshire, Cheryl Giffes, who started an organization in San Fernando Valley called Blankets of Love. And she knitted a blanket for this little girl who, for a week after she was returned to her parents, wouldn't come out of her bedroom, was eating her meals in bed and wouldn't communicate with anybody. And she was quite shaken, as you can imagine. I couldn't fathom, as a father. And Cheryl went out and knitted her a community blanket and everything this little girl cared about, and put it into this quilt and hand-delivered it to her. And that afternoon, she baked cookies and brought them out to all the officers that were guarding her home. And that's just a small, individual story of what local artists do, that they're artists amongst all of us, that we reach out to help those through tragedy, those in difficult times. We help those at-risk youth to become great citizens in our community and do wonderful things. We are working on an art walk project right now in my district with Scott Sterling. I'm sure he's here somewhere. And the Museum of the San Fernando Valley, where we're going to do a mural walk. Scott, stand up, the Museum of San Fernando Valley. Stand up. All right. You guys are phenomenal with what you do. And doing so many things with CSUN and so many others, I just can't thank you enough for making this today, Tom. Art's Day in L.A. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Wezar.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the work you do each and every day. And not only that, for the work you are doing today by coming to the city of L.A., lobbying council members, and really highlighting the importance of the arts in our communities. And one thing that is so important that I know we all understand is, and coming from, I used to be on the Board of Education for LUSD, we've seen how decimated the arts programs have been in our public schools, particularly in low-income areas. And so for many of these young people, that's the only place to get exposed to arts. But because of a number of organizations and people involved like you, we're supplementing that. So thank you so much for doing that. We've got to do more in our public schools, especially in low-income areas where a lot of our kids are depending on us on that. And finally, you know, L.A. used to be known as the mural capital of the world. We love our public art. We painted on walls everywhere, and we are known for that. But unfortunately, we don't have a policy that allows more for public murals. That ordinance is coming to City Council soon so that we could once again be the mural capital of the world. My story with murals goes back when I was a kid, and I walked to school and I see these beautiful art pieces on the walls. And I would see figureheads there about my history that I wouldn't read about in my books, didn't know who they were. But I'd ask about, who was that guy Pancho Villa? Who was Zapata? You know, who was Cesar Chavez? And that really gave me a history lesson, gave me pride in my own culture. So it's important in many ways, not only to express our arts, but we're teaching a lot of people about history, about appreciation and love for one another. So thank you for other work. And finally, thank you, Tom Labonge. You bring energy and enthusiasm to this, and you are a huge supporter of the arts. Thank you for constantly reminding us of these important things. And Olga, beautiful work. Congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome back, everyone. It's terrific to see you all here with this very, very strong showing of the presence of the arts community here in the city of Los Angeles. And as we've talked today, as the speakers have talked, as my colleagues have talked about the importance of the arts to all of us, it is important to remember how much we are enriched as a people and as a community by the arts. And so many of the things that were said today could be said anywhere in America, because every city is enriched by its local artists. But in this chamber, in this city, it's especially important to note that the second-largest city in America was built, in a very real sense, on the arts and the creative industries. The city that we live in today, that we know and love today, is what it is because of the arts. So while it's important to remember how much we're enriched as individuals and so on, this city, throughout its history, has been dependent upon a vibrant arts and creative community. And it continues to be today. So it's especially important, I think, that we thank our colleague, Councilmember Labonge, and thank Olga for all that you've done to continue to maintain that commitment, even in the most difficult of budget times. And I think it's important that we take note of the fact that Cultural Affairs does not receive any support from the general fund, and yet continues to maintain this tremendous commitment to the arts that we have here in the city. And so, Olga, thank you for your great leadership in making that possible, and to all of you in supporting the efforts that she makes. But as much fun as this is, and as great a kumbaya moment as this is for all of us, I also want to make it a little bit of a call to action for all of you. Because as many of you know, many of you worked with me when I was a member of the state legislature in support of my bill, AB 700, increased funding for the California Arts Council. We know, well, but we, thank you, Tom, but we know that that founded in the legislature, and it didn't get passed the Assembly Appropriations Committee. And as a result, today, California ranks 49th in the nation in its state support of the arts. California, the state that is known throughout the world for being the creative capital of the world, and we rank 49th in the nation in state support for arts funding. That is shameful. And we can do something about it, because there is another bill pending in the legislature right now, AB 580, authored by Assemblymember Adrine Nazarian, my former chief of staff, who's now representing Los Angeles so well in the state legislature. AB 580 needs your support. And today, I'm introducing a motion to have the Los Angeles City Council weigh in in support of that bill. But it needs your support as well, because that bill is now going to the Assembly Appropriations Committee, the same place that mine died. Please don't let that effort die. If that bill passes, we'll have $75 million of support for the arts statewide. We'll be 12th in the nation instead of near last. Please call the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, Assemblymember Mike Gatto, and let him know how important this bill is to you, how important this bill is to our city, how important this bill is to our state. Call the Chair of the Assembly Appropriations Committee and make sure we advance this forward. And if we do that, we'll continue to be the arts capital of the world. Thank you all for your advocacy. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. We are the second-largest city in this great country. But if you look around you, we are also an international city. And every day that we have Day of the Salvadorino, Chinatown festivities, African-American Month, I mean, every time we have a celebration, we hear the music, we celebrate the artists. But for me, what's more profound is how that resonates in our communities for our children. In areas where we have 40% poverty, like in my district, we have the states, as I mentioned before, pulling away and supporting our education. I've seen artists over in Oregon give it themselves. They give their time, they give their resources, they pay for equipment, they pay for the paint, they set aside their studios, they do fundraising. Despite all odds, they're out there with this great spirit in letting our neighborhoods know, our children know, that they matter. And you threw it through your artwork, you do it through your music, to have orchestras come to our neighborhoods and let a child know what an oboe sounds like. To have orchestras in MacArthur Park where the señoras and the families eat their tortas alongside with a person with a three-piece tuxedo is an amazing juxtaposition and a contrast, but it all says we're all one community. And you bring that to our great city. So through the 12 years as a council member, I've been very blessed to meet so many unsung heroes, whether it's on the stage, in the plays, in the theater, in the orchestras, or just using colored pencils, drawing magnificent drawings in beautiful studios, or watching the murals come up. As Councilor Wezar has stated, we're hopefully, for the city attorney will get that ordinance out and be able to begin again the great tradition of the murals. But I can tell you what a difference it's made for me as a youngster growing up in Northeast, but also to see you as role models, those of you who grew up in the '50s and the '60s with a certain spirit of not only calling the question authority, but celebrating our cultures, the great authors that have written so many great books. We have something to point to, to our grandchildren, it's because of you. So I want to say thank you so much. Thank you, Tom, for allowing this day to happen. Thank you, Olga, for all your hard work. But more important, I want to say thank you to the artists who are humbly, quietly celebrating the great art that makes Los Angeles so great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize the council's own work of art, Tom Labonge. Let's give him a big hand for pulling this all together.
Council deputies, to raise your hands. You're the ones that are going to carry the batons for your council members. Raise your hand there. Come on there. Raise your hand there, deputy. Don't be afraid. Art does not bite. Okay.
Tom, step away from the mic. Mr. Keretz.
I just want to echo Mr. Krikorian's comments. I think we don't recognize enough that this city's economy is based on the arts, its history is based on the arts, its image is based on the arts. We help so many individuals go down the right path when we support the arts, and we must support it at every opportunity, everywhere, whether it's at the state level with AB 580, whether it's at the city level, making sure what's proposed in our budget stays in our budget. And we don't do enough for the city where the arts is the heart of the city, and it always has been. And I'm just pleased that we're recognizing that today. Thank you, all of you who are involved. And let's keep doing absolutely everything we can to rebuild arts in our school, in our city, and our state, because it's so important to all of us. Thank you so much.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The folks that are here, overflow crowd, how many of you can show his hands are here because of arts? This room is packed because of arts. Thank you for being here. That sends a very, very strong message. Olga, thank you for what you do. I know you're out there scraping for grants constantly to keep the programs going. I know there's some San Fernando Valley folks here. Who's here from the San Fernando Valley? Wrong. Strong from the San Fernando Valley. In our district, Stuart Vaughn is steward here from the Canoga Park Arts.
He's outside on his horse.
He's outside on his horse. And Spike Domick, Spike Domick, Spike, right here. I want to commend you for all you do for the arts, all you do for the kids, all you do for the community. I know I met you just again recently out there in the community cleanup, but not only in the arts, not only in music, not only in helping with the arts, but helping the community. And there's so many folks that outreach to the community, but that arts is such a critical program. I know a lot of the schools have abandoned it, they've abandoned music, they've abandoned arts, they've abandoned recent, they've abandoned everything. And the fact is, that is part of the fabric of what we have to support and continue. And I was listening to my colleague, Mr. Krikorian. Hopefully, we can get something done to get some dollars for it, because you shouldn't have to go out scraping every time to try and keep a program moving. We have so much vitality here in the city of Los Angeles, so many entertainers. I know that some of them are going to start singing in a few minutes, because I see the microphone in his hand. God help us, he's going to sing again. And too bad Mr. Garcia is not here with the piano, we could have quite a serenade. But to all of you, thank you for being here, thank you for the support, and obviously, the message is very strong. We need to continue this, we need to strengthen this, we need to move on with it, and we need to keep those arts happy and active here in the city of the angels, where the entertainment capital of the world, arts is part of it. Thank you all very much for being here. Thank you. Thank you, Tommy.
Mr. Labonge.
Mr. President, members, all the members, the council staffs, all the CLA, CAO, you see how important arts is? So many people spoke. This has been a great morning. I really want to tell the deputies, I got around the world here 38 years ago because of the arts, and the arts got me around the world. So if you want to go around the world, get to the arts, Ms. Wayland. Unfold your hands and say, I love the arts. Okay.
Check.
Ms. Brazil, Little Joe here was at Damn Yankees. Little Joe was at Damn Yankees. He played Joe Hardy, that famous song, "You Gotta Have Heart." Well, he's going to sing "You Gotta Have Art."
I thought I was going to do "Inside of Me."
"You gotta have art." Come on, Joe.
All you really need is arts. When the wind, that's when the grin should start. You gotta have heart. All you really need is art. So when the bases are loaded, the count is three and two, you'll hit a homer.
Keep going.
We can depend on you.
Come together.
Okay.
Let's get rustled up here.
President, I officially thank you. I thank Mayor Villarosa, his great deputy, Eileen Adams, and I ask all those in the art community to stick around, because you're going to introduce a councilman who's going to introduce someone very special in a moment. Let's hand for the arts.
If I could ask the clerk's office to circulate the amended item 23, and what I'm going to do as we're going to Mr. Richard Alacon, we're going to vote, Mr. Clerk, we're going to vote, Mr. Clerk, on the ordinances.
It was reported to be submitted.
Mr. Clerk, we want to vote on the ordinances. Do you want to identify them?
Yes, sir. Those ordinances that were voted on previously are items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Again, 1 and 3 through 9, sir.
Okay, first, let's vote on reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now, this actually vote on the ordinances. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, has item 23 been circulated?
I believe they're working on it now, sir.
I don't know what that means. I mean, either it is or it isn't.
It is.
It is?
It has, Mr.
Okay. Mr. Alacon, for your presentation.
As council members, I promise I won't sing for fear you might walk out and break a quorum. So thank you, Mr. Council members, a few weeks ago, as many of us had these occasions, you'll get a call from somebody, some celebrity, and you'll say, why do they want to talk to me? And so, a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of... And so, a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of getting one of those calls and sitting down with Russell Brand. I didn't tell you what we did. And also, his partner in this endeavor, Lori Burns, about their vision and plans to open a licensed substance abuse treatment center in the northeast San Fernando Valley in a building that was previously occupied by People in Progress. Many of you have worked with the People in Progress organization. Unfortunately, last year, they went bankrupt, and yet their building, their facility, is still in place. And so, it was that building that was the focus of our conversation, because Russell Brand and Lori want to establish a new rehabilitation program in that facility. PIP, as many of you know, was a name that we all associated with service to people needing help and the service and service in the community in addition to their rehabilitative services. The closure of PIP came as a shock that created a gap in resources because it was an 88-bed licensed treatment center. In addition, PIP was interwoven in the community through providing a major source of volunteers to so many events and activities in the San Fernando Valley. PIP also participated in community cleanups with councilmembers Krikorian and Reyes's office, as well as mine, and many others. So it was a great disappointment when it left our community, unfortunately, as a result of the economy. So in 20 years in public office, I've met with and discussed projects with hundreds of people. And this was a meeting that really stood out for obvious reasons, not only because of Mr. Brand's celebrity, but because of the opportunities to replace a void, something that is now a void in our community. Russell Brand, obviously, an internationally known comedian, an actor who talks seriously about his own struggles with addiction and his nonprofit organization, Freehab Incorporated. And Lori Burns is the founder of the Teen Project that helps youth exiting from the foster care system and who, in her own life, at the age of 23, transformed her life of heroin addiction and prostitution after she was nearly murdered by one of her purveyors, or two of her purveyors. So today, we are, this is not only a presentation, it is also an item on the agenda, because we are approving $500,000 in community development block grants that were previously allocated to my community. The PIP project is actually in CD6. Us having no member there, I offered to provide the $500,000 over there so they could rehab the facility and create 26 jobs, permanent jobs, in the process. Not to mention the 88 beds that will be provided, ongoing services to approximately 600 people a year who have serious addiction problems. So the item before you, item 23, is it 23? I can't see. 23 is an item to provide that $500,000 to stimulate this project, to give us the opportunity to restore the community spirit that was an element to PIP's program and will be incorporated in the Freehab project. Colleagues, it is my hope that we continue to do more, that we invest with others to maximize our limited finances and resources. Freehab Inc. and the Teen Project are on the front lines, and we owe them a tremendous debt of gratitude for the work that they do. I'd like to tell you more about Russell Brand before I present him with his certificate. Russell Brand began his career as a stand-up comedian and rose to fame in the UK in 2003 for his Big Brother spin-off, Big Brother's Big Mouth. He launched his first nationwide tour, Shame, in 2006 and became known in the United States in 2008 with his major roles in Forgetting Sarah Marshall, Getting Him to the Greek, and of course, the Dudley Moore film, Arthur. He was a voice actor for animated films, Despicable Me, one of my favorite films, having a five-year-old kid, and Dr. Nefario, as Dr. Nefario, and Hop as EB, Easter Bunny, for those of you that didn't see Hop. Brand currently hosts his own talk show, Brand X. And he himself is a recovering addict who struggled for years with heroin addiction and had numerous stints in rehab before getting clean and sober 10 years ago. In fact, I want to applaud him for that. And even more so, since that time, he has dedicated much of his time to raising awareness. Brand serves as a patron at Focus 12, where he got his sober, where he became sober, the Teen Project, and Friendly House in Los Angeles. Friendly House in LA, I'm sorry. Brand has hosted events for numerous nonprofits and is widely known for his philanthropic efforts. Last month, Brand sat alongside Mitch Winehouse, father of Amy Winehouse, to raise funds and awareness for the Amy Winehouse Resilience Program. The initiative will be rolled out to 50 secondary schools across England and will provide a free confidential phone and online service for young people. Brand is going one step further in the city of Los Angeles, expanding his impact through his organization, Freehab Inc., where he is the president. Freehab is located at the site, as I mentioned, of People in Progress, and he will expand licensed treatment to include full medical detox and employment services. Freehab plans to employ several of the prior People in Progress employees and restore community partnerships. Freehab plans to open its doors for services in the fall of 2013. So Russell is recognized today for using his dual role as an actor and a person in recovery to raise awareness and expand resources to help others in the city of Los Angeles. He is a testament to the possibility and power of recovery. And for that, we owe him a debt of gratitude for his commitment to recovery services. And on behalf of the City Council of Los Angeles, I'd like to present him with a certificate.
Sorry to interrupt, but I do have a speaker on the queue that would like to say a few words. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just keep thinking of 76 Market Street and where you have started. You know, I got to tell you, Lori Burns is a phenomenal person. She knows how to grab energy and work properly. She's been a national celebrity star on homelessness, which has given awareness that nobody else has. So first, thank you for your ability to work the media, work the acting community, and get that national publicity, which is key. Round of applause for that first. The second thing I want to say, when I've been at your facility and I met the young people right there in Venice, you know, they're the ones who have peaked out of the addiction and feel strong enough that they want help and they're online and they're looking for jobs. And one level of talking about the issue, it's the low-hanging fruit. It's those that have already reached a level where they're ready to move forward. But you've taken them and brought them to that level. You've given them the confidence at that level, and therefore, they're becoming part of a productive part of society. So I just want to say, Robert Downey Jr., I had him over the house, and I'm just saying that for our actor, who is an incredible actor. Just the partnership of your energy, the cameras that grind against you and see you, that is phenomenal and extremely helpful. The fact that you've had addiction issues, that again inspires other people. Hey, if he can do it, he's a cool dude. I'm going to do it too. So you're an incredible contributor. So I just want to thank everybody, and especially you, Richard, for highlighting it right now to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. Alacon.
Maybe I should introduce Lori Burns at this time.
That would help.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Lori, as Mr. Rosendahl pointed out, is a phenomenal person. For those of you who don't know her, she actually began a career in information technology 20 years ago and works for Northrop Grumman as a contract administrator. She has managed multimillion-dollar projects for O'Melvin &amp; Myers, Islands Restaurants, CB Commercial, Auto Club of America, Broadcom, Florida Annual, Fox Studios, and several other Fortune 500 companies. But most compelling about Lori is not her professional success, but rather, her personal transformation. At the age of 23, Lori was a heroin addict and was a known street prostitute. She was nearly murdered by two of her purveyors, and at that point, she realized that she had a second chance. Since that time, her life has been dedicated to giving back to the community. Lori is a foster mom who has taken over 30 at-risk teens under her foster care. In 2007, she founded the Teen Project to assist teens exiting foster care that were ending up in homelessness. In the past 10 years, Lori has told her story to audiences across the US and abroad, and she was featured on the Steve Harvey Show, where I believe Russell saw her and committed to help her with her projects. In 2010, she published her life memoir and methodology for success called "Punished for Purpose." Today, Lori is 26 years sober and is known nationally as a subject matter expert in the areas of abuse.
Give her a round of applause. 26 years.
The Teen Project's mission is to provide teens aging out of the foster care system and at-risk youth with all of the resources and support of an intact family. Programs include Sober College Housing, Street Outreach, Venice Beach Protection and Direction Center, online housing database. Lori is recognized today for her, for using her personal transformation and success to open Teen Project to help kids. She's another testament to the possibility and power of recovery. I did see something in her resume that I thought was worth mentioning, and that is, she founded a, maybe she can say something about it, but a service where a homeless person can get their taxes done for free. You dial a phone number, and they, within 40 seconds, will tell you where you can go anywhere in the United States to get your taxes done for free if you're a homeless person. So these are people who really care. We owe both of them this tribute and our gratitude for the work that they have done and the work that they will continue to do in the city of Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to present Russell Brand.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was very kind. I'm very grateful to be here today and to participate in your democratic process in your country, particularly as an Englishman. I didn't know there was singing and stuff. Seems like a lot more fun than in my country. Really done well since you broke away. Congratulations on your republic. Yeah, I'm really, really grateful, really grateful to be here, particularly in association with Lori, of whom you've heard a little and from whom you will shortly hear, because she does already such wonderful work in the community in Los Angeles. Myself, as a recovering drug addict, an alcoholic, you come to realize that regardless of acquisitions that you may make professionally or materially, that these things are of little value compared to the banquet that one can attend in the world of philanthropy and social activity. An important part of my recovery is awareness of other people suffering from this disease, the symptoms of which are obvious on our streets. When I spent some time in downtown Los Angeles, I was astonished by the degree and severity of homelessness in that community. Now, I know for myself that, sort of, for me, it's astonishing that we have learned to acclimatize to such an extreme condition as people that are the same as us being cast aside. When Lori found that there was an opportunity in the previous People in Progress institution, which could largely deploy some of their infrastructure, it seemed too good an opportunity to miss. People in Progress, as Richard has already mentioned, have done tremendous work. For me, there is no greater cause than addressing this issue, because, as has been kindly said of myself and perhaps more literally and accurately said of Lori, huge potential can be unlocked in people that are a terrible detriment to society. Now, I know there are often concerns when a facility such as ours, Freehab, opens in a community, knowing that there'll be an influx of people with addiction issues and homelessness. But what excites me is the potential for alchemy when certain program and principles are applied to these people. The people that have henceforth been a tremendous detriment and deficit to their community can be embraced and transformed and can become active. We intend, obviously, as part of our obligation that accompanies this certification, to give back to the Sun Valley community to generate work there. And Los Angeles is my home now. I really like it here. I just got a green card. I'm living here. I'm whacking out all sorts of taxes. More than happy. "English architects," someone told me, "done this place," so that's good news as well. And one of your councilors is called Englander. The signs are everywhere. So for me, this is an entirely positive thing. While superficially, there are some ugly aspects to the disease of addiction and the condition of homelessness, what I see there is tremendous potential, tremendous potential for change, potential that, to some degree, has been realized in my own life, and that in partnership with you here, hello there, with you here, this has become a wonderful accompaniment, in partnership with the members of this council, the members of our entire Los Angeles community, something that can evolve and develop, help lots of people get back into work, working in recovery. Lori's an example of someone who would have been a total pain in the ass for society, as was I, and now occasionally, I'm of some use. I think this can be tremendous benefit to the city of Los Angeles, initially to the district in which we're inaugurating, but then throughout the community. Like Counselor Englander was saying there, we're looking primarily for private philanthropic grants, many of which are coming. There's a lot of excitement about this project in the film community. Many of the people, some of whom that counselor mentioned, are interested in becoming involved in this. I think this can be an exciting project that will embrace the artistic reputation of this city and the philanthropic tendency of the people that are here. Thanks very much for this opportunity to chat to you. I'm tremendously grateful. And Lori wants to say something now, doesn't it, mate?
I am just so absolutely grateful for your support and Councilman Alacon's support of the homeless people, the mentally ill people, the veterans, our people, our community. I am just so overwhelmed today with your amazing support for our project. As the councilman mentioned, I founded the Teen Project. The Teen Project helps kids that have exited foster care to homelessness. But now that we've opened in Venice Beach and seen the number of children coming from all fronts, abusive homes, unsafe homes, foster care, I mean, it just tears at my heart. We have put together a group of 500 volunteers and are mentoring 122 grassroots organizations to do what we do, so we can be there to address the needs of our homeless children. And the program that you've talked about, so when I came off the streets myself, And the program that you've talked about, so, when I came off the streets myself, I was fortunate to receive a Job Training Partnership Act grant to go back to school, which is one of the things we'll be doing at FreeHub, is allowing the folks that are being transformed through the treatment at FreeHub to obtain an education through trade schools and place them in internships. And through that grant, I became an information technology specialist, and I work at Northrop Grumman in the technology department as a program manager. And we have created a text home program where any homeless person in the nation can text the word "shelter" and their zip code to our short code, and it will return a shelter that's within their location within forty seconds. And I am so, and this came as a result of some very, very generous developers at Northrop Grumman and developers that we knew outside that put their efforts together to create this, and it's just an extension of what we're seeing here today, which is the community coming together to help our people. I always say, in Africa, when a child's parents die of AIDS, the community comes around that child as aunties and uncles and raises them up, and I believe we have aunties and uncles all over this nation, and we need to awaken them to what is our people and to be there for them, to rescue them. When I think of someone laying outside, sleeping outside, knowing that no one is looking for them and no one is coming for them, it hurts my heart. I will spend the rest of my life rescuing those that are out there, that are hopeless, and transforming the lives of others to create hope where there is none and to give back what I've been so graciously given through the people around me, which is the restoration of my own life and the ability to be here for others. When Russell came to me with the idea of FreeHub, I was so excited and overwhelmed to be part of this project. And then, when I saw the building and I heard a little bit about it and saw the news about People in Progress closing, it just, it just created even more of an incentive for us to get going on this. And then, you'd think that was enough. We were able to connect with the prior staff from People in Progress and learned that that, the prior staff were actually residents that had gotten sober at People in Progress, and they were so committed and grateful and dedicated that they decided to serve their time and create their jobs within the People in Progress community, and they're here with us today. And I am just so absolutely grateful for all of your support. Thank you so much.
Colleagues, every once in a while, there are presentations, and when we're looking out, we see the eyes just focused and really in awe. Russell Brand is one of the most articulate people that has ever been before this body, and we are truly blessed to have these two people to give us guidance, leadership, and services to a community that is so often forgotten. So with that, it's my pleasure to present these certificates to FreeHub, to Russell Brand, and to Lori Burns, and to Teen Project.
Alarcon, as you present the certificates, let's have the council open the roll, close the roll, and tableate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations.
And for clarification, sir, that's the Housing Community Economic Development Committee report that was just adopted.
Let's see. As this presentation concludes, let's run a few items as Councilman Zine puts together his presentation, and Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the reports, Housing Community Economic Development Committee reports for items seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-two have all been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
And there are no cards on those items? Mr. Clerk?
There are no cards, and they are all items for which public hearing has already been held.
Okay, so let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tableate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. Councilman Zine? Councilman Zine?
All right, here we go. Thank you, Mr. President. A star-studded day here at the city council chambers. And the next group, Los Angeles Police Department Communications Division, if you please come forward. LAPD, Joey B., come on up here, Joey B. Come on up, everybody, the whole group, everybody up. So ladies and gentlemen, this is the Los Angeles Police Department's Communications Division. It's 2013 National Dispatchers Week. These are the individuals that take the calls from the public, dispatch the units, and make sure that public safety is handled here in the City of the Angels. April fifteenth through April nineteenth marks National Dispatchers Week, a time to acknowledge our police service representatives and the critical role they play in public safety. Again, these are the individuals that take all those calls from the public and dispatch all the units for emergency purposes here in the city of Los Angeles. This is an annual event. It was first established by President Bush in 1992, honors police dispatchers nationwide for providing vital emergency services in their respective communities. So this is a national program that started in 1992. I'm very honored and proud to bring them forward today for the council and the people of Los Angeles. The Communications Division is the largest entity within the Los Angeles Police Department, consists of police service representatives known as dispatchers, who are responsible for answering all 9/11 emergency calls for police, fire, emergency, and medical services. When you call 911, you're going to receive one of these individuals who's going to screen that call and forward it for the services that you need. LAPD dispatchers are a critical part of public safety for the city of Los Angeles. They provide dispatch, dispatch support for all geographic patrol traffic areas within the city of Los Angeles, and there is that BCC, Bureau of Command. Why, get over here. What are you hiding in there for? Come on up here. Oh, you're taking pictures, all right. Well, you're the one who always has the questions. So in 2012, in 2012, they provided services for LAPD officers, and they handled, this number is incredible, four million calls for service from the public. There are four million people here in the city of Los Angeles. That means every single person called 911 here in the city of the angels. On this day, or actually yesterday, Chief Charlie Beck and I personally honored them for their hard work and commitment to the safety of our police officers and the city of Los Angeles residents over at the communications center here in downtown LA. And I'd like to present certificates of recognition from the city of Los Angeles to the 2013 honorees for all the hard work and dedication providing vital services to the community and those individuals that we have. In addition to certificates for the two dispatch centers, we have one dispatch center downtown in Los Angeles, next to the old police administration building known as Parker Center, and we have one in the San Fernando Valley on Roscoe, in the northwest San Fernando Valley. And we are going to have tours, Captain, am I correct, tours for the public?
Yes.
I'll let you announce that, but the people who want to go see a dispatch center, state-of-the-art facility, we're going to have, is that's okay to say that?
Absolutely.
Okay, because that's what I was told, open to the public for the first time. You can't get in there normally, but like open house at the fire station, there's going to be open house at communications, then the captain will explain that to you. But we have the supervisor of the year, Representative One Todd Austin. Where's Todd? Come on down, Todd. Todd, thank you. And Maria's going to hand me the certificates, the resolutions that we have for Todd Austin, and we also have police service representative, Marcia Myers. Marcia?
Marcia.
Marcia?
Yes, sir.
There you go. You weren't there yesterday.
Huh, no.
I missed you. And we have, how about Kim Hunter? Kim Hunter? She's not here? And how about Benita Allen? Benita Allen? Bettina? Bettina? Bettina, 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 Bettina. Bettina. Okay, and then we have, Todd, this is yours.
Thank you, sir.
And how about the Sue? Sue LePree? Sue, Sue Le, she here? There you are.
Sue.
Okay. There was also one for Lieutenant Charles Mealy. What happened to the one for lieutenant? The one for the lieutenant? Is he here? Didn't he retire? Okay, I thought he retired.
It's an award.
It's his humanitarian award.
Oh, his humanitarian award? And who's that go to? Oh, that went to, okay, there it is, I saw lieutenant, okay. So you got, okay, so he's not here, he doesn't get one because he retired. Okay, now, that's good. We also have for the Metropolitan Communications Dispatch Center and recognition of National Dispatchers Week, so this will go to the Metropolitan Communications Dispatch Center, the one downtown LA, and I'm going to give that to you, Captain. And remember, Captain, I knew you when you were a police officer or sergeant?
Police officer.
Police officer, and now you're captain of police with a hundred years of service. God bless. And then we have, at least, and then we have Valley Communications Dispatch Center recognizing the folks. And it's interesting, this week, they've taken all the personnel from Valley, put them downtown, so this week, they're all working together, they're celebrating, they're having a lot of activities and festivities. One Week Party is what they're having at Communications Center this week. So the Valley Center has been moved downtown, they'll move back to the Valley next week. Who's here from the San Fernando Valley? There you go. From the San Fernando Valley. My colleague?
Yes.
Former senior lead officer.
Yes, sir.
A few words from you, and then we'll turn it over to the crowd here.
Thank you, Dennis, and thanks for recognizing our dispatchers in the city of Los Angeles. Our dispatchers are special. Let me be clear, they are our first line of communication when someone needs police for fire services. And I welcome and encourage everyone to visit the Metropolitan Dispatch Center and plug in and listen to the 911 calls. I had an opportunity as a senior lead officer, we brought in a number of neighborhood watch groups, business watch groups, even my teen CPAB teenagers, everyone was able to plug in and listen. If you remember, will never forget, the North Hollywood shootout. Just imagine being on the other side of the phone, receiving a number of these 911 calls and directing resources and listening to the police officers on the line who are shot and waiting for assistance. Put yourself in the shoes of our dispatchers. We love you, God bless you, and the dispatchers and the PSRs that I've come across with, Don Daco, Stephanie Nelson, Tanya Thomas, who I've done great work with, you know, we need to recognize them, not only this week, but throughout the, throughout the year, and thank them for your courage, your commitment, and your compassion to serve our city and as well as our Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you, God bless you, we love you.
Oh, look at that. That's awesome.
So that's what it's about, LAPD National Dispatchers Week, and the captain, Captain Justice is here, he's the commanding officer of the Communications Dispatch for the city of Los Angeles. Captain?
Thank you, and good afternoon. PSRs are really the unsung hero for the city of Los Angeles. They are our first line of defense. They take all these calls and they keep our officers safe, they keep the city safe, and they basically do this without any recognition, without any thanks, nobody calling to say "thank you for taking my call." So this is really their week to celebrate what they do for the city of Los Angeles and for the police department. They are truly heroes, and they are very deserving of this recognition, so thank you very much, I truly appreciate it. And as Councilman Zine mentioned, Friday is our open house at the Metro Dispatch Center, so anybody's welcome to come in and take a tour of the center. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
We do have one council member on the queue.
We have a couple more.
Okay. Sure, I'll say a couple of words. Really, on behalf of all of the dispatchers, not only at LAPD, but our brothers and sisters who work Los Angeles Fire Department at their dispatch center down here on Temple, it is an honor to have such a public recognition. I think this is the first time where we've actually come to the council chambers and have been honored in this fashion. As our captain said, we're not often seen, what's the phrase, never seen, often heard? Sincerely, thank you for the honor and thank you for recognizing the job that the dispatchers at both the police department and the fire department do 24/7. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I just would like to say thank you. This is a great honor, and I will cherish this moment forever. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you very much. I'm sort of at the end of my career right now, so this is kind of special for me. So thank you very much for the appreciation, and this is the first time I've ever been here, maybe I should go into politics when I retire.
Anybody else?
We do have a couple of members on the queue.
From our colleagues, this is the first time, I've gone over to communications every year when they have the National Dispatchers Week, but I figured, you know what, you folks need to see, and the people of Los Angeles need to see them, these are the voices that dispatch those calls. And there was a situation, when I was over at communications yesterday afternoon, there was a pursuit taking place, and you may have seen it on the news, it was in Ventura County, where an individual was in pursuit, or the deputy sheriff's high patrol pursued an individual, and after the car stopped, the individual got out and started dancing around, all these deputies with their guns out, and he goes up and confronts these deputies, and a big donnybrook took place. You saw it live as it was taking place. These are the folks that bring in the resources to back up those officers to make sure it's done, whether it's a pursuit, or a fire, or any other kind of emergency situation. So when you call the LAPD communications, when you call that 911, that critical call, as we saw what happened, the sad situation took place in Boston, these are the folks that dispatch the units and make sure that public safety is there. Interesting enough also is they are 58 individuals short. Their division is short 58 individuals, 58 dispatchers, 58 PSRs, and I'm submitting a motion today to call for the city of Los Angeles to find the resources so they can fully deploy what they need for personnel to answer those 911 calls. What they're doing oftentimes is linking divisions together where they have to handle multiple calls, multiple divisions, 58 is a lot of folks not to have. So I'm submitting that motion, I made a commitment to them yesterday, I signed that motion, we're going to submit that. I'll get you and our colleague, Mitch, you were in there at the time we started, why don't you come on up and join us? Councilman Mitch Englander, who's also a reserve also at the LAPD.
Do you have two speakers on the queue, Councilman Zine?
Okay, well, you can come up and join.
Yeah, Councilman Englander and Councilman Labange.
Okay. Go ahead, then, come on up.
How are you, please?
Thank you, actually, yeah, I dashed in here and hit my button right away to speak, so thank you. And to our dispatcher earlier that said she should have gone into politics, we need more women around the horseshoe, it's not too late. I just want to say thank you to everything you do, our true first responders, our first ones to act in an emergency, and I don't know if any of the council members or even general members of the public have ever had the opportunity to go to a dispatch center and actually put on the headset and listen in live on what you guys are dealing with every single day, day in and day out. It's amazing. And the fact that you remain professional, that you follow incredible protocols under very unique circumstances, that you never know what that next call is going to be, that you know with certainty somebody's in distress, that you know that somebody perhaps is having a major medical emergency or life-threatening, that you know that somebody is cowering somewhere, hiding in a closet with a phone, saying that there's an intruder in my home, that it could be a child, or a senior, or anybody else, that you guys are dealing with just the worst kinds of circumstances most people couldn't fathom going through on a daily basis, and you're that person on the other end of the phone. You're that first person to answer the phone, to keep them calm, to get all the information. It's just extraordinary what you do. You truly are the heroes in Los Angeles, and our city of angels, we're blessed, while we might be short-staffed, the ones we do have are powerful and mighty, and I just say my hat's off to you, God bless you for everything you do, it's heroic. Thank you.
Councilman Labange? I just wanted to rise, Captain, and the 311 operators, thank you, all of you. I know, I wanted to say 311 first because they watch this show too, Joe, okay? Because when 311 doesn't handle a problem, it goes to 911, and we want to direct 311 and 911. So I just took advantage of anyone who answers the phone and thanked both the 311 for today, Dispatchers Week, and the comment that you made about never being in this building. Captain, I want you to second my motion, and Mr. Zine has, I want all your operators to feel free to take a break and come over here, climb to the top of the tower here, Tom Bradley Tower, overlook the, overlook the city, and know that that badge that the Los Angeles Police Department wears is of this grand city hall of Los Angeles. And before you walk across Main Street, I hope you take a time, it's only 10 minutes up. You're really special people, thank you for those who happen to call my house sometimes when there's a need and all those other issues there, it's very special. It's very important what you are, and you're very professional, which is so key. So I want to thank the 911 operators, and also know too, Captain, do we need to, because LA Fire goes through you first, right? Do we need to figure out how we could go 911F or something so it goes right to fire? Because every second counts with the Fire Department as it does with you. So that's just something to think about in the future. Thank you very much. And Mr. Zine, you interrupted me.
Not yet, but I will.
Thank you very much, 911.
Thank you.
Yes, you're obviously short-staffed. You take in over four, what, million?
Million.
Four million phone calls, and your staff has decreased, hasn't it? I mean, that young lady said she's retiring, you're too young to retire. We continue to need you in the group. Look, 911 is the one call none of us want to make. We don't want to make it because what we have to say ain't going to be that great when we get on 911. So the first thing we need is 911 to be effective and responsive and get things done. Whatever we can do as a city to support 911, we better do it, and I'm 100% there for you all. Thank you for what you do for all of us. Thank you for what you do for all of us. Thank you very much.
To conclude, Councilman Zine? Thank you. I just want to add, Mr. Labonge, that once they get their 58 personnel and there's no one in line, there's no list pending at this time, which means there's going to be a long process to get those folks screened and in the pipeline to become PSR's dispatchers. Once they get their 58, maybe 60 by the time they come around to it, then they'll have time to come over and visit City Hall, but they're working diligently to make sure that those services are taken care of in the City of Los Angeles. So hopefully, Mr. Labonge will support that along with my colleagues, and will somehow find the appropriations so they can be fully capable of handling the services for the people of Los Angeles. Again, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, National Dispatchers Week. Let's hear it for all of our dispatchers. 9/11, thank you. Back to pictures, back to pictures.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, members, in the back of the room, you see a group of folks who've been standing and sitting and talking, and I want you to know that it's the LAX Coastal Chamber of Commerce. If the camera can go way to the back, you can see them back there. The group is here for their Leadership Academy, which is a fantastic opportunity to hear from elected officials, and I'll be speaking to them. Christina Davis is the head of it, but it is the LAX Chamber. Let's give them a round of applause, colleagues. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, Mr. Clerk, this is what I'm going to do, because I do not want to lose a quorum. We have one more ordinance. Is that item two?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I have one card on that, so if I could call Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, to come forward on item two.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go there and just click on J. Walsh Confidential. We're putting up two posts within the next couple of hours about this meeting. Okay, where's Garcetti? He's not here. He has missed 13 out of 15 meetings.
Stay on the subject.
Well, let me say, maybe you stop me on this. I have never said a praiseworthy word about the mayor of the city. I praise the--
He is not talking about this item.
No. John, just stay on item two. When general public comments, you can say whatever.
Item two, we're 100% in favor. ¿Dónde es el jefe Garcetti? You want me to translate that to you?
Stay on the subject. All right, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Weesar? On 33, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, and Juan Akala. So we're going to take the cards, Mr. Weesar, and then we'll go into the appointment, which I hope can be done with some haste. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm going to stick on the subject just for a few minutes. Okay, this is David Fleming. I don't know why he's not here. You're going to be reappointing him. Well--
He's here.
Oh, he's here, good. Because again, I'm going to do something rare. Twice, I'm going to praise the mayor of the city. If he's right, I praise him; if he's wrong, I condemn him. Fleming is an absolute model for an engaged citizen, wealthy man, who, when he was on the MTA Board, he was very good. That was under Reardon. He's very good now, and I think he's, you know, there's not a shadow on him. I mean, after all, you unanimously put on kiddie porn meisters of the mayor's vote. Here, the mayor has redeemed himself by putting David Fleming, or reappointing David Fleming to MWD, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Juan Akala?
I'm only going to speak one minute. I actually wanted to give Russell--
He is not talking about this. Stay on the subject. You've got to stay on the subject. You have to stay on the subject.
See, as a homeless, you've got to carry napkins, condoms.
Stay on the subject.
Appointing this dude. Appoint anybody because you do business the same way anyway. You take things from people all the time. You are teased with a license. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. No, still morning. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. My concerns, the Metropolitan, you're appointing persons, or the mayor's appointing somebody to Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. So the relationship between the Metropolitan Water District and the DWP, can the council representative of the Energy and Committee explain that to the public, why the city is appointing members to the Metropolitan Water District? We understand from Councilman Labonge that the DWP, the electrical part of the DWP, provides the lowest rates in local utilities, but he doesn't mention the fact that it's subsidized by the Department of Water because they also are cohabitants of the same agency. So I'm just trying to find out the relationship. We know, again, from City Council, that's so open and transparent, that nothing malicious would go on here. And the relationship, again, between the Metropolitan Water District, who owns a lot of property, and what's the situation with the Metropolitan Water District and the county new Clean Beaches and Clean Water Act that will charge for a partial fee to all that property, and a partial fee for the DWP property? So it would really be helpful for the Energy Committee Chair or somebody to explain the relationship between the city and the Metropolitan Water District and the DWP.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Weesar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome David Fleming, who's no stranger here, and want to, again, thank him for his work not only in this commission, but a number of other commissions. He has given of his time to make Los Angeles City a better place. And we waived this item out of committee, but wanted to assure that we gave this attention it deserved and just, Mr. Fleming is available for any questions anybody may have. But again, just on behalf of the city, thank you for your service, and we don't need to get into a number of my rate of issues that we have, but we all know how important MWD is to providing water to our residents in the City of Los Angeles. In fact, more than half of DWP's water comes from MWD, and I'm glad that we have a representative such as Mr. Fleming to represent the City of LA and its interests there. So thank you so much.
Okay. With that said, I was waiting for the Jack-in-the-Box effect, so I'll go to Mr. Englander.
Yeah, I can't--
Now, you know what, David, just cut Mitch off for a minute. We would have sent you home an hour and a half ago with a unanimous vote, but now, back to Mitchell Englander.
Thank you, because I can't sit idly by on my hands as we are about to reconfirm Mr. Fleming. Particularly with some of the comments that were brought up by some of the speakers, I want to highlight some of the reasons they're wrong. This is a remarkable human being, an individual, who's done so much for Los Angeles and so much for the people of the San Fernando Valley, I can't begin to tell you. This is the guy whose brainchild it was to change the charter, which ultimately led to the creation of neighborhood councils, which ultimately led to many of the changes over the last decade that we've seen here in governance in the City of Los Angeles. This is an individual who, because of the arts we talked about earlier, there was a dream many years ago to build a performing arts center in the San Fernando Valley. He spearheaded the campaign and the effort to raise the money to build now what is one of the most incredible structures for art that we have in the City of Los Angeles at CSUN for the Performing Arts Center. It's an individual who has stepped up to help children in hospitals with Valley Press and has put his own name and stake out in front to raise money, to expand that hospital, to protect it, to provide critical services to those in need. This is an individual who immediately after the Northridge earthquake said, "We can't sit by and wait for the economy to rebound," so started the Economic Alliance of the San Fernando Valley, which is thriving today, to get involved and help local businesses expand, help them with access to capital. I can go on and on and on, because it's just remarkable what David Fleming has done for Los Angeles with VICA and the Economic Alliance, with serving with the Chamber, with BizFed, with so many things. It's incredible that you are, and continue to be willing to volunteer your time to make this a better community, and what you've done to save the fields recently, working with MWD, where 3,000 families play soccer and baseball, many at-risk youth. That was threatened, and it was about to be closed. There were three eviction notices over a five-year period of time, and I partnered with David Fleming. He stepped in, negotiated the deal, and got it done and helped us. And so not only do I ask colleagues for your I-vote, which is most certain, I ask for a round of applause immediately after casting your vote, because he is a true angel amongst all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, just be very brief. You're the best. You've been a historic player in many, many issues in this city. Water is obviously our number-one need. Southern California is based on the water coming in. We're a beautifully blessed area, and if there's somebody who can make a difference in that issue or the politics of water, it's you. Thank you for everything you do for our great city and our region. Bless you, thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Mr. Fleming, your qualifications are longer than our council meeting. You have been a pillar of the community for so many years, involved in so many activities. I traveled down Van Noone Valley Press Hospital, and that hospital wing is named after you and Gene. You have done so much for this city for so many years. I just want to acknowledge the fact that you are a pillar in this community. You're always involved, you're always helping, you want to make it a better place, and you're very committed to Los Angeles. So whether it's water, or electricity, or whatever the case may be, or the good of humanity, David Fleming's there. So congratulations. You're going to have unanimous support on this. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes?
First, thank you, Mr. Fleming, for all that you have done for our region. Water District, as a board member, been an amazing opportunity to start testing other approaches on how we treat our water, how we contain it, how we can make it a multipurpose element. Because right now, when you look at other places throughout the world, and how they store it, how they filtrate, how they recycle, we are far from other regions. And we know that necessity is the mother invention, that old adage. So I'm hoping in the future, we could look at our river corridor, our watershed, and start thinking about economic development as it pertains to water, how we bring those green concepts, especially around the inner city, throughout the southeast region of the county. So many places that need to breathe, to soften, and water has a way of doing that. So as we look forward to the River Master Plan, as we look at all these other watershed issues, we could be a little bit more, I'm going to put this experimental in how we contain the water in this great channel. So I'm looking forward to working with you in the future, and I thank you for everything you've done in the past. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. With that said, David, let us wrap this up. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations, and well deserved.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
The first meeting I ever had with David, we met at the Pacific Dining Car for breakfast. He ate cookies for breakfast. I just want to share that with Los Angeles, David. Expensive cookies. Okay, Mitchell, we're going to lose a quorum, so hopefully you take up item 19, and it'll be done quickly.
I'm ready. David?
Item 19?
Yes.
Add any cards.
No.
Okay. We're going to lose it. Or we will lose your 12th vote, Mitchell. That's what I--
No, 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 I'm ready, I'm ready. So item 19, colleagues, is an amendment to our ordinance in transportation for these unhitched, unlicensed billboards, if you will, these mobile billboards that we've been working on for many years. In fact, every time, in partnering with Dennis Zine, we have another change. They figure out a loophole around the law to skirt the law, and we've seen these throughout a lot of communities, and working very closely with our city attorney's office and working with our state legislators, we've actually managed to continue to go to Sacramento and fight for additional ordinance changes. As we all know, not only are they a blight in our local community, but they're a public safety issue as the way that they're parked and they block traffic, they impede traffic, they impede views. Recently, the Ninth Circuit Court affirmed that the district court's decision to deny the motion for an injunction would have denied our ability to enforce our new ordinance. We won that as well. And that was, thank you to Michael for that, and to many people that have been working on this. If I could just turn it over real quickly to our city attorney, that you can let us know that this, once and for all, probably, and most definitely, hopefully, will close every possible loophole so we can get rid of these things and start the enforcement.
Hopefully, a well-closed loophole. They actually, the state adopted our definition and our current ordinance. I had requested that Assemblymember Blumenfeld, soon-to-be councilmember Blumenfeld--
Yes.
--adopt our ordinance definitions, because they were much stronger than the state definitions. And as Councilmember Englander just described, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal upheld our current mobile billboard ordinances, finding that they were narrowly tailored, were significant, this city had a significant interest in removing blight and increasing public safety on our roads, and that the laws were, left open ample opportunities of communication. Kimberly Erickson and our Business and Complex Litigation Division argued the case in front of the Ninth Circuit and did a terrific job. And in terms of, now, Lone Star, which had filed a lawsuit, has filed a motion in the Ninth Circuit requesting that the entire Ninth Circuit hear the case. We expect that the Ninth Circuit will probably reject that. And we should have closed all loopholes now. There's just no way for them to do this. And just to key you in, all other cities in the local, all other local cities are now adopting our ordinances, and so we are at the leader on this issue throughout the state.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And if we could also thank our city attorney, he's, Michael, you've been working tirelessly on this. You and I have partnered on this for years.
10 years.
10 years, that we've been sitting down on a regular basis for 10 years, for not just this ordinance, but litigation, fighting these guys. Nobody in the community wants these, and so I really appreciate all your help and support and your hard work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you, and thank you very much, Mitch, for what you did on this. Many of my constituents, as you know, on Centinella, every day, as they're going to the 4:05 or to the 10:00, see those billboards out there, and they call in on it. This will tighten the law, this will give us more enforcement capability. Obviously, this is a step in the right direction, and as Chair of Transportation, we wanted to make sure it happened. Thank you for your leadership as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. City Attorney, have we taken care of all ordinances now?
Yes, we have. And can that last item be sent forthwith, please?
Forthwith. Okay, we're going to quickly go to item 35. Mr. Sacks? Arnold Sacks? Item 35. Item 35.
Just thank you again, Arnold Sacks. This is rent escrow account program. So as we just heard Councilman Rosendahl mention, that when his constituents drive to the 10 to the 405 freeway, they notice these billboards or these parked advertisements, and they call in. So how are these housing code violations reported to the city? Do people call them in? Are city staff drive around? This is an article from the LA Times about parking wars taking a toll on drivers and tickets alike. And somebody went out with a parking enforcement agent and drove around while they gave out tickets. So I was wondering, these parking tickets are $87. This is an article about LA blight law goes unenforced for over two years. The law states $1,000 in fine. So I'm thinking, if the city, the parking enforcement go around and get parking tickets, can they go out and enforce the LA blight law at $1,000 a day? We just heard in a presentation how 911 operators are being shorted because you don't have the positions. Can you figure out on $1,000 a day how many positions 911 would be filled with in the general fund? But note, no citations for blight, but citations for REAP and citations for parking. That's why this council has such great leadership, because they look at the problem from the bottom end instead of using their minds. And I'm just curious, if you have personnel that can do this, and you have somebody from the LA Times, this is Gail Holland, why doesn't she go out with somebody and look for blighted property and report back to the city council about that as a source of income? I know you really don't want to mess around with the banks because you need that money to float loans to pay outstanding structural debt, but it just...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Okay, with that, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Buscaino, item 27, I believe.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Colleagues, the item before you is a very important item for our community of Watts. In 2008, Mayor Antonio Villarrealgoza launched a five-year, $5 billion housing plan for the city of Los Angeles called Housing That Works to address housing supply and affordability within the city of Los Angeles. The plan specifically identified Jordan Downs with the ambitious goal of a redevelopment project that would expand the site's supply and quality of affordable homes and create a vibrant urban village and model for public housing developments throughout the country. This mandate was carried forward by the Housing Authority, which conducted a comprehensive community-based planning process that resulted in a master plan in 2010. Working with the Los Angeles Planning Department, this master plan before you was subsequently reconstituted into a specific plan with corresponding land use regulations. The Jordan Downs specific plan was unanimously approved by the City Planning Commission in April 2012 and is one of the first community planning documents designed to meet LEED-ND standards. This is a long-range neighborhood development plan. It will be implemented in phases and as the market demand for housing in Watts improves over the next decade or two, or so, rather. I want to thank Mr. Reyes and his committee as well for moving forward on this. The initial critical phases include a one-to-one replacement of existing public housing units, the construction of Century Boulevard, and the development of neighborhood-serving retail. Can you imagine Jordan Downs, mixed-use retail, and also an opportunity to provide, just a way to, an opportunity for homeownership for our residents in Jordan Downs? Key aspects of the plan include development capacity for up to 1,100 additional housing units, a new network of public streets that knits the neighborhood together with the existing street grid, a central park, community center, bicycle facilities, and additional local retail. Hackla has invested more than $45 million in this project so far and has committed that again in resources to move this project forward. We'd like to thank Hackla for their commitment in redeveloping Jordan Downs. This project is projected to add almost $1 million a year in tax revenue, create 200 permanent jobs in Watts through the commercial retail uses, and create almost 6,400 full-time equivalent jobs during the construction phases of the project. It's time to move on in this project, colleagues. This is a once-in-a-lifetime project that's coming closer to fruition. I respectfully request your full support of the Jordan Downs specific plan. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Krikorian, I've been informed that we are now ready to go to item 45. So if we would, Mr. Clerk, we're now going to take up item 45. Mr. Krikorian.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. Members, as you know, we are about to embark upon consideration of the mayor's proposed budget following the budgets release, the proposed budget's release on or about April 22nd. This year, as in past years, it has been an important priority of the Budget and Finance Committee to hear the input of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates, who are here with us today to provide a presentation on the budget and on proposals that have been considered and evaluated by the Budget Advocates representing the Neighborhood Councils throughout our city. So I would like to invite them to please come up to the front table and provide their presentation.
Okay, before that, if I can have you guys come on down and get seated, and then we've got public comment cards on this item. We thank you in advance for the work that you've done and appreciate this presentation. But I'd like to call John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Juan Akala. Excuse me?
Mr. President, as the public speakers are making their way up, I just want to also note that a copy of the report of the Budget Advocates is going to be circulated, if it hasn't already, to, around the horseshoe. And I do also just want to take a moment before they even begin to express my personal thanks, and I think the thanks of everyone in the city council and all of the constituents that we represent for the many, many extensive hours of volunteer time and research and analysis and testimony that the Budget Advocates throughout our city have already provided, and I very much appreciate your work and your being here today.
Okay, okay, Mr. Arnold Sacks?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
And it's my understanding you have one minute.
I understand that too, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon. This is a great opportunity to address, I don't know, people who will be making procedural decisions for Neighborhood Councils. It's time to step up. More importantly, it's time to really step up and start to look at what the city charter allows. The city, in its wisdom, has so many different sources of funds that go to the city council. For example, funding that should be staying in Neighborhood Councils includes funding that's collected from REAP. It's your neighborhoods that face the blight. Why shouldn't you get the money that's collected to fix the blight? It's your neighborhoods who get the bad sidewalks. The council doesn't have the slightest idea of how to handle it. AB 1290 funds are still in effect, $43 million to the city. You should be getting a share of that, and you should be putting it to work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Juan Akala, or John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. If you want to go to J. Walsh Confidential, just go here, go like that, and you'll be right there at J. Walsh Confidential. See? I want to say, I was here at the Charter Commission when this organization was formed, both Charter Commissions. I think they're doing an excellent job, especially how little money they get to do their job. There have only been one or two scandals with hundreds and hundreds of people. Not a single member of the Neighborhood Council has ever been caught with kiddie porn. The mayor can't say that about his appointees. I think you're doing an excellent job. I think you should listen to them. You might not agree with all of them, everything they say, but most of what they say is correct. Keep doing a great job, and keep visiting HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Juan Akala.
See, the Neighborhood Council is actually how the government should be run, by the neighborhoods, not by the city, not by the state, not by the nation, because the legislators don't really know what's going on in each neighborhood. They should be fixing the streets. They should be doing everything because they know what's going on in that neighborhood. You guys make a lot of money not knowing what the heck is going on in your city. I go through every sidewalk, they're all broken up. I go through every street, they're all broken up. I see all these homeless people, and all you do is create more ordinances to make housing more expensive, and that is not the way to go. The Neighborhood Council is the way to go. But you're not going to change your way of doing business, are you? You're going to keep on creating homelessness all over the world.
Okay, thank you for the public comment. Mr. Krikorian? Okay, Jay?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council members, for having us. I'd like to start out by having our panel here that's come today to at least introduce themselves with their name and their Neighborhood Council they represent.
Jonathan Rich, Tarzana Neighborhood Council.
Ed Novy, Sullentahunga Neighborhood Council.
Gregory Wilkinson, Panorama City Neighborhood Council.
Vera Del Pozo, Boyle Heights Neighborhood Council.
Kristi Clark, Sullentahunga Neighborhood Council.
David Mack, Watts Neighborhood Council.
And I'm Jay Handel from the West LA Neighborhood Council and the co-chair of the Budget Advocates. Thank you for having us again. This is our third year in a row of coming before the council, again, that requested seat at the table that we've been looking for for so often. Yes, there have been hundreds of hours of analysis and dozens and dozens of meetings. Today, we're proud to be able to present to you our 23 recommendations that focus on revenue enhancement, expense reductions, and quality-of-life issues that will help make this the best city in the United States of America, if not the world. We make our recommendations very carefully. We work very hard working with union leaders, with department heads, with staff, with analysts, and quite frankly, checking other cities to see what their best practices were so that we were able to make a report that would show you not only how to reduce the expenses in the city, but actually how to enhance the revenues, doing things in some cases that we already do, but we just don't do the same as other big cities do. So what we would ask the city council today is to do what they did in the past, and that is to take this report and ask the CLA and the CAO to review this report and come back in 30 days with a report on their own analyzing what we have given to see where they stand, where the city stands, what can be done, and what the processes would need to be in order to effectuate some of these changes.
Again, my name is Ed Novy, and I am our advocate for pension reform. I first wanted to start off to thank the city council for naming the Los Angeles 2020 Commission. This is an absolutely brilliant idea of assembling a group of community leaders to tackle the city's problems outside of the horseshoe. We have one request from the Budget Advocates. We would like to present formally in front of the LA 2020 Commission our thoughts regarding the budget, and we're hoping that we get that endorsement from city council in order to do that. Budget reform is a very comprehensive issue for the city. It involves benefits that we're paying our city employees, but it also considers the investments that our city is making. It's all part of a big puzzle, and there is several recommendations that the Budget Advocates would like to convey to the city council today. Number one is we'd like to defer the city's employees' retirement age. We think currently the age is too low, and we strongly endorse the mayor's suggestion, and has already been implemented for new hires, that the age of retirement is raised. There's numerous schemes that could be discussed to make that happen, but we believe it is a strong way to move forward regarding the city's pension problems. Number two would be that we're looking to end spiking of the last three years of employment that city employees currently enjoy. Again, we're not trying to battle city employees. We're looking to preserve their pension funds for many, many decades to come. Number three would be to negotiate the actual contribution that city employees are paying into the plan. Currently, that number is way too low, and in the private sector, you're looking at approximately 20% of a person's pay goes toward their retirement, whether it's in a 401K or other means. Number four, we're looking to suspend COLAs within the pension system. This will save hundreds of millions of dollars that can be further negotiated as we come into contract negotiations next year. Number five, we're looking that the actual department that runs the pensions for the city, that there is some type of full-cost recovery with that program. That program has, that department has over 100 employees that cost the city approximately $10 million a year. If it's not feasible to eliminate that department, perhaps the city council should consider some way privatizing those costs, or at least expecting some kind of recovery from city employees to administer their program. Number six, we're also looking to expand administrative reform for the two boards that handle the pension plans for the city. We think by combining the boards, this will save a lot of money, but we still realize that as part of administrative hearings, you probably are going to want to keep both boards separate. I think that these basic concepts help us save tens, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars related to pension costs, and we ask the city council to consider our white paper proposals for pension reform. We're also looking to have the city council endorse a separate commission on pension reform. Thank you.
Whomever.
The subject I'm going to speak about is the health care. First of all, I'd like to thank, Mr. Weston's not here, but the city council that is here for your attention and support of us. According to the Mercer Consulting 2011 National Survey, that's a survey that's used by all insurance companies. It's a standard by which we go through to check and mediate all rates and amounts that are paid in premiums. Employees currently pay 20% of the premium for an individual health maintenance organization, which is an HMO plan, and 28% for an HMO family plan. In stark contrast, city employees pay less than 1% of the premium for either an individual or family HMO plan. Increasing the employee's share of the cost of health care premiums by 10% would result in over $30 million in savings that could be utilized to maintain essential services. Do you believe that the city should take this consideration and align benefits to the rest of the region and other government service employees? Should they align these benefits to align with the private sector? City must address $136 million on health care benefits. Plan design changes needed, a reduction of the level of benefits. Employees need to contribute more to premiums for spouses and dependents, higher co-pays, and deductibles. Thank you.
Again, my name is Greg Wilkinson. I'm with the Panorama City Neighborhood Council. I'd like to thank the council here for its time and consideration of our matters. I'd like to thank the council here for its time and consideration of our matters. Couple first things I'd like to speak on basically is the fact that the city government often considers the city employees as quote-unquote "the city family," and we'd like to remind the council that the city family, in fact, is all the residents, businesses, and stakeholders in totality, not just the select employees who by and far do a wonderful and very valuable job for our city, but there are others that we also have to be concerned with. And on that, the concern we have is with the base salaries of those employees. They received quite a number of raises over these last troubling fiscal years, and what we'd like to do is see a little bit more shared sacrifice from those employees. We'd ask that for this upcoming fiscal year, that they basically agree to withdraw the 5% automatic COLAR that they've been given for their salary increases, even though it is for cost of living. The cost of living, according to the CPI for the Los Angeles region, is far below that 5%. So we feel that it would only be fair and just that these not be treated as automatic raises, but in fact, COLARs directly tied to what the cost of living is within our regional community. The other thing we'd like to do is have the wage scales of the city workers themselves looked at. These haven't been looked at for some time, and some of the wage, the actual wage scales that these people are paid are by far above market rates. One of the additional problems with the wage scale is that some employees, because of these automatic COLAs, are above even their own wage scales. You have some employees, we comb through the entire city budget, position by position, some of these employees are literally paid more than 50% above the cap of their own wage scales. Finally, to be fair to the city employees, we'd also ask that the management staff of the city, and that includes all elected officials, take a 10% pay cut as well. We expect leadership from our leaders, and I'm sure that the city workers would expect no less, to be fair to them.
And finally, and again, we're only highlighting some of the items within the report of 23 issues. This council has moved forward with the city attorney in drafting documentation for an exclusive trash contract throughout the city, thereby leaving average $25 million a year for five years on the table. It's unconscionable when we're taking away city services, we're furloughing, we're asking people to work less, we're asking citizens to get less, to leave $125 million over five years on the table. And we would ask you to do the right thing, and that is to revisit that issue and look at the non-exclusive trash contract to bring those revenues back to the city and to implement that program as soon as possible. In addition, from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, I'm going to speak a little parochial for a minute because those are the people that work with us and we work with them. In the last four years, we've taken that department from a $4.2 million budget down to a $2.2 million budget, reduced staff from 65 to 22, and increased the number of neighborhood councils to 95 with two more coming, and then people want to know why they can't act efficiently. Under Section, Code Section in the Charter, 911, and the city attorney has weighed in on this, this council continues to take away the money that that department needs to operate fully under the Charter. And we're asking you to reinstate $800,000 to $1 million into the budget that was already proposed or will be proposed by the mayor to ensure that this department is able to act and fulfill its mandate under the Charter, under the ordinance, and under the plan. And finally, at testimony the other day in Budget and Finance, we're asking again that this city take a good, hard look at your centralized collection system. We write off hundreds of millions of dollars a year in bad debt. We have had 22 of our recommendations accepted by the inspector general and written into the report for you over the last, our recommendations over the last two years. So we know we're being heard. Now we want to see it effective. The centralized collection system, the Office of Finance cannot come to you today and tell you how much debt is owed to the city. They'd have to go to every department and figure out what the debt was, how much it is, where it is, as far as aging, and that is no way to run a city, it's no way to run a business. A centralized collection system will cost this city between $1.2 and $1.5 million to implement, according to the inspector general. We lose hundreds of millions of dollars because we don't have it. So we're being very penny wise and dollar foolish in not investing that money into fixing this city's IT to be able to have a centralized collection system. So again, we thank you for having us. We believe we are being well received by the city council and by the department heads and even by the unions, and we would hope that you would take this report today and ask the CAO and the CLA to do a report on this report and have us back in 30 days with that information. Thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Krikorian to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think a 30-day timeline for response, given the fact that we are about to engage in the actual budget hearings, is a bit demanding. But what I am going to ask is that the proposals that you've submitted receive a response from the CAO, which we will consider in the context of the budget hearings. It may not be a single responsive report that comes back here in 30 days, but we will be taking these up as we move forward in the budget hearings. So again, on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee and the entire council, I want to thank each of you, not only for being here, but much more importantly, for the hundreds of hours that you've put into analyzing this and the advocacy that you engage in on a daily basis in our communities. So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Clerk, if we'd, I mean, Madam Clerk, if we'd open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And I want to thank you all for all of your hard work, and Jay, it's always a pleasure to see an old friend, okay? One that's about my height. I like that. What's before us now, Mr. Clerk? In fact, I have one item held special by cards. So we'll take up item 40. I have cards from John Walsh and Juan Akala. Do they have time? I would think they both do, so if you come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. And this concerns the BID, the Media Business Improvement District. We're very upset that the BID has allowed four gigantic 10-story high, four of them on one building, the Sunset Vine Tower, four of them. Take a look, they're Red Bull. The cost of the BID, they have done a good job, however Hollywood BID, and I pay for it because if you're a renter, your landlord has to pay into the BID, and that goes into the formula that raises my rent every year. So we are paying for the BID to do services the city should be doing, but now the property owners are forced to pay it, and they, some of that is passed on to us. The one good thing about the BID, the best thing, is they're not hooked in with the LAPD, although most of the officers in the BID are former cops. In other words, we went for three or four years at the corner of Yuck and Argyle about a dope house. We got nothing from, it's like they had Helen Keller buttons on, everybody at the Hollywood Police Division. Then I talked to a BID person who was a former cop. He made, he didn't make any complaints. This is what the BID said, to the LAPD, "We're raiding that building. You want to come along with us?" And they came along. We were told, and they cleaned that building out at the corner of Yuck and Argyle, that big glass building, in three hours. The next day, the wood was up there and it was gone. That's three years and no problems. I wonder if maybe the cops and the drug dealers are a little too close. BID, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Juan Akala.
I don't know. I'm a friend with all the BID in Hollywood because I gave them my book and they read it, and they agree that it's a good thing. Yeah, well, Hollywood makes a lot of money on just pure BS, you know? Vampires, werewolves.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Akala.
The subject is Hollywood and improving Hollywood. How can you, how can you improve a society that's based on BS? It's impossible. We need a society that's based...
You have to speak to the subject, Juan.
Reality.
It's not about society. It's about this...
Hollywood. It's about Dollywood or Hollywood. I like Dollywood better.
All right. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we are going to continue item 42 until this Friday. What is that date?
Mr. President, that's April 19.
Okay. Without objection. That'll be the order. Where are we now on our agenda?
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment.
John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Michael Hudson-Madena, please come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Again, the mayor, I mean Garcetti, who thinks he's going to be mayor, this is the 12th meeting out of the last 14th. He isn't here. Want to know where he is? He's at 99th Street Elementary School, and what is he doing there? Campaigning for mayor. And there isn't one of you that got the cojones to speak about it. Not one of you. And incidentally, when Vera Gosa was running for mayor, he sat in one of these chairs, and he never did this kind of crap. He came to the meetings, Vera Gosa, but Buscagno, because they're both Italian, Garcetti and Buscagno, that's okay. Look, Herb, you gave him permission. I don't know whether that's mayonnaise on your chin or whether it's Garcetti DNA on your chin.
Why don't you, why don't you watch yourself?
And under the federal law, we had a ruling, insolent speech is protected speech. You damn well know that, city attorney. Insolent speech is...
If his speech or conduct creates a disruption, then he certainly can be...
At the meeting, how?
Okay, let's get back to what you were saying.
You what? The general public comment.
To what you were saying.
Herb made a decision to allow this man to run. Now, this allowed Garcetti to be absent. We want him to return his salary. One month's salary, he wasn't here, return the salary. Remember, insolent speech is protected speech. And we, I want to say, Zine should be our next comptroller, and last Friday, there was no public comment. There was supposed to be public comment. And if you all want to get down on your knees in front of Eric Garcetti, fine, but I suggest an AIDS test for every damn one of you.
All righty then. Okay, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning or good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Based on today's presentations, I certainly hope, some of the things that were said by some of the council members, Councilman Barnes, I hope your phone system works when it's time for the budget discussions and all these people from the Art District, Art Presentations who vote come down to listen to some of the discussions that go on regarding the funding. I expect to have the council chambers filled, just as they were today for Art's presentations. It would really be great. It's amazing, 911 staff has decreased. Today's city clerk started the meeting, we did the roll call, go to presentations. What a slight change of how the agenda has changed from city business to presentations. So in essence, while the 911 number employees have decreased, presentations have increased. So Councilman Zine, when you make your motion for funding, maybe you could fund a situation where when you increase the presentations, a corresponding amount of money is offered to positions that need to be filled for employees to actually answer city residents' questions. Because in the five years that I've been coming here, today's meeting started one hour and 40 minutes after it was supposed to because it was filled with presentations. It's almost insane to think that that's the route this city has taken. But when in bad times, keep the crowds laughing because that's all they'll remember.
Thank you. And just for the record, we went through the agenda before we began the presentations.
For the man from Lenox, anytime you have a question, Arnold, I'll answer it at the ropes, and I'll be glad to help you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so now if I could get Michael Hudson-Madena, Dan Jones, and Juan Akala.
Good morning, or good afternoon now, President, Honorable Counsel. And today was a special day for me as a native Angelino and seeing my city bloom with the arts. I just came back from a one-week trip to the greatest city in our country, New York City, because that has an art scene that we should be aspiring to, and I'm hoping we're on that direction. So with that, I just want to share with you what I've been doing as a volunteer in Boyle Heights to give opportunity to the underprivileged with the Boyle Heights Community Youth Orchestra. We started last summer with a program of 60 kids, and these kids have moved in nine months to something really incredible. And it's all due to, again, the support of our parents and the teachers that we have, and it's all on volunteer basis. So the arts do need much more support, even though we have a lot of people thinking that, oh, well, we can keep volunteering forever, but we can't, so it's unsustainable. But with that, I just want to say thank you for all your help, and we have Woody Guthrie Day coming up. And so I am Mexican-American, half Anglo, half Mexican, and so on July 14th, here in downtown, we're going to have a Woody Guthrie celebration with this song. Okay, I wish you all a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Okay, Dan Jones, followed by Juan Akala, followed by Chuck Tenon, if Chuck is still here.
Relax, Mr. Jones, relax.
Go right ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. Over a year and a half ago, I did exactly what my mother told me to do. It's all about principles and it's all about going straight to the top. I thought it was about the principles I lived with. No. In the State of California, it's the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. 17 months ago, I went right across the street and told the US Federal Courthouse that they're in a lot of trouble. Matter of transparency, I did exactly what my mother told me. I took one step across the threshold in Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and told them one thing. I've already told this council, this is going to remain this great state of California. The first book my father gave me after I enlisted in the Marine Corps was The Art of War. The war in this building is the art of capital. You're all taking it from everybody. You're taking it from these people. $32.5 million donation to the Economic Development Agency. What kind of development agency are they getting now? This whole economy was a gimmick. It's called the subprime mortgage law. It capitulated the whole middle class, didn't it? Why is the Art District, why is everything we love in this country having to be beg, borrow, and pleaded? Because the 1% took it from it on the subprime mortgage law. My father worked for home savings and loan the day... The day, let's see if you guys think this is a funny inside joke. The day my father came home, the day President Clinton signed that bill, was the day, Daniel, the day you see mortgage balloons floating around, is the day all hell's going to break loose. What do you think mortgage balloons he was talking about? Nothing they can't see. The TARP bailout programs, one from the left wing, one from the right wing, was nothing more than a Treasury dump, a payback, a kickback from the people that wrote the law.
Thank you. Thank you. Juan Akala, followed by Chuck Tenon. Come on, don't disrupt the meeting. Juan Akala, Chuck, I mean, Mr. Akala, wait, let me finish. Juan Akala, Chuck Tenon, Lula Washington. Now go ahead, Mr. Akala.
Oh, well, what? Okay, I was just trying to see how he does that. It's really amazing. Anyway, you know my public comment is all about housing and how you are thieves with a license. This lady was complaining outside that you're charging her $5,000 to put two electrical plugs in her house. How in the hell do you expect anybody to have affordable housing like that? When you charge $5,000 for two lousy little electrical plugs? That is what you're doing. You're thieves with a license and you don't even realize it. Or the people don't realize it and they just sit over there. You, you just sit over there and do nothing. Why don't you come to City Hall and toilet paper the whole place? You know what I mean? Because that's what you need, more toilet paper around here. Because there's a lot of BS going on. We can clean up the BS very quickly. Anyway, housing for everybody. We need to change the real estate laws so nobody can go homeless for any reason. And so no crooked banks can give you out loans that you cannot repay. Don't you get that from the very beginning? We need to change the real estate laws. They were written incorrectly by the founding fathers that came and ripped this country of everything. See, they are the illegal aliens. They call the Mexicans illegal aliens. And you can cross the Canadian border any way you want to.
Hello? Thank you. All right. No Chuck Tenon? There you are, Chuck.
Counsel President Weston, counsel members Chuck Tenon. Gun violence, street violence, children being killed in our streets and cities across America, the need for gun control and the discouraged violence must be addressed. We need to stop the violence and give the children a chance. They're the future of our city. We need more programs to help educate our children. We need to lead the way to stop the violence so we can live in peace. Five years ago, we wrote a song that was inspired by and supported by Congresswoman Janice Hahn. Her goal was to have a kids choir from the city to sing this song in front of the city consulate, City Hall, and to be used to help fund programs for kids to deliver a strong and powerful message to discourage gang violence. This city needs to lead the way. Surely, one of our council members can step forward and help find a kids choir so that we can help fund programs. The first line of the song says, "Our city cries a thousand tears each time a child dies." Also, our Landing Marina Del Rey sport fishing has a new boat, the Big Whale, for eco tours, nature excursion, whale watching for families and kids. And our other boats offer special fishing trips for underprivileged kids, handicapped kids, blind kids, disabled kids to experience our ocean. We are an approved vendor of the city of Los Angeles. Herb Weston, the mayor's office, and Janice Hahn each took a group of one hundred and forty kids. Herb won an award in the African-American Film Festival for his video. Four years ago, Bill Rosendahl promised to take underprivileged kids in his district fishing, but he never did. His office told me that they had no budget to take the kids fishing and they could not afford it. Alarcon, you said we need more social recreational activities for the kids. What about you?
Thanks, Chuck. Good to see you again. Now, is Lula Washington here? No, I don't see her. Henry Leopold Marine, Jesse Marquez, and Yana Garcia, I think. Go right ahead.
Yes, as you know, MU thirty-five shows the names of people that past council authorized to borrow money directly from the heads of departments, offices, and bureaus in lieu of providing workers the prevailing sum due. And in this State of the Union, that's called a tax shelter. And in a tax shelter, the only difference between a tax shelter and stealing is whether or not you're going to account for the money. And as you know, you haven't accounted for the money yet. So, Mr. Parks, you're my representative from Section Eight, from CD eight. You've been on the Budget Committee, you've been moving all the money around.
Mr. President, the speaker should speak... Address the council as a whole.
So, as the council in the whole, my CD eight representative failed to account for the time and money of me for the past twenty-two years. My city councilman has been on the financial committee, so he's very familiar of CRA funds that was diverted from public employee paychecks and used at will of the union and ten percent used at will of the city. Because I'm sure the city and the union didn't agree to subvert prevailing wage laws in the United States of America. Because if you were going to take ten percent away from the prevailing wage sum, then that would mean you were trying to subvert the prevailing wage law in the first place. So I'm sure you were sheltering that money and not trying to steal that money. So I'm waiting to find out when this body is going to account for the money they sheltered for the benefit of public employees that cannot be used for non-public employees and get it back to We the Peoples. Because Brother Rabbit, I mean, Uncle Remus and Uncle Sam made me understand, I can't run from no trouble in my happy place, it's going to be your happy place until everything's actual factual and satisfactory.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marquez, followed by, I believe, Yana Garcia, followed by Adrian Martinez. Please come forward. Yes, sir.
My name is Jesse Marquez. I'm executive director, co-理事 for Safe Environment. I grew up all my life in Wilmington. We're here on general comment to talk about and to share information with you regarding the Port of Los Angeles BNSF Rero SKEG project. That we are one of the organizations that has appealed this project. So we have a brief understanding. We are not against an intermodal facility if one is needed. The fact of the matter is, one is not even needed for the next ten years. If you remember, We the Public paid $2 billion for the Alameda Corridor, which was supposed to take truck trucks off the freeways. Well, for the last ten years, it's been operating at thirty to about thirty-five percent capacity. Why? Because the port does not mandate its tenants to use it. Another thing, why we're against it, is because the location, it is off Thailand's property. The port has purchased over six hundred acres in Wilmington over the past years to build it off port property. We have identified various locations on Port of LA, Thailand, where they could build it. Right now, Pier five hundred, which is on the master plan, is underwater. But it's already on the master plan to be filled and was it say its uses? A future container storage yard. Well, I submitted public comments stating that it should also be designated as an alternative intermodal facility. There's where we wish it to be placed. And if we're talking about jobs, building it on Pier five hundred creates hundreds of more jobs than building it in Wilmington in the city of LA. And that is the fact. The other thing, there are alternative zero emission technologies. We have supported zero emission technologies. American Maglev has a Maglev train. For four years, they proposed for doing and build a demonstration project for free at the Port of LA and for four years, they've turned it down. How much free can you want? Even BNSF did not disclose to the Port of LA that they had tested the Vision Motor Corps zero emissions hydrogen gas truck.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Garcia, Adrian Martinez, is there Winton Johnson? Please come forward. Identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Adrian Martinez and I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council and our thousands of members in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here today in solidarity with many of the groups that have appealed the BNSF SKEG rail yard. This is a very contentious issue. It's an issue of environmental injustice. We're working with several of these groups to oppose this rail yard. There's been several attempts to try to improve it, including location, provide more mitigation. So I just wanted to make sure that the council's aware that this is a very important issue that has brought interest to appeal it, ranging from the mayor of Long Beach to environmental organizations to community groups. So we'll be in the halls today and over the next couple of weeks, trying to raise awareness of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, followed by Anne Marie Wharton, aka Rita of Sunland, followed by Brian Barajas. Yes, sir.
Hello, counsel. My name is Winton Johnson. I'm a resident of West Long Beach. I live in the Century Villages at Cabrillo, which is two hundred and fifty feet away from the proposed rail yard site. I just, I came here to set up some background about the area I live in. It's referred to as the diesel zone because of the excessive amounts of diesel exhaust in the area because of all the industrial pollution. We have the port, we have the four oh five freeway, the one oh three freeway, we have the seven ten, and we have refineries in Wilmington and Carson. West Long Beach fills the brunt of all this industrial pollution because we have continuous east prevailing winds. To build a project of this magnitude in an area that is already disproportionately suffering from industrial pollution just cannot happen. We, in my neighborhood, there is a fourteen-year less life expectancy than those who live in East Long Beach, which is only a couple miles away. The approval of this rail yard will mean certain death for myself and all of my neighbors. This pro site is next to two parks, a daycare center, a veterans' housing facility, and four schools. Now imagine, we've all been in school. Can you imagine how can you study and concentrate on your lesson plan when there's cargo being loaded and unloaded? It's a very loud process. Trust me, I hear it every night when those trucks roll by. It rattles the windows in my house. That's what's going to be happening to the children in the schoolrooms. So I just, I came here to ask you to please acknowledge the appeal and just to stand up and just to stand on the side of life. Because, I mean, according to the 2010 census, there is a fourteen-year discrepancy in life.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Your time has expired. Okay, Anne Marie Wharton, followed by Brian Barajas. Brian, are you here? Okay. Yes.
Hi, good morning. My name is Anne Marie Wharton, aka Rita of Sunland. I've been a homeowner for over twenty-one years and I can't afford DWP rate hikes. I can't afford to be taxed into the stratosphere to increase the power of union goons. I oppose the agenda behind the green tech Get LA Off of Coal program. I say it's merely a scam to recruit new IBEW members and thus growing Brian Darcy's stranglehold over LA politics. Now, when I said this to repower LA Representative Cynthia Strathman at the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council meeting last week, she became very irate and unhinged and started shrieking and dooming me to a fate of coal-filled black lungs for me and my children. And there's nothing I can do about the rate hikes, so I better get with the program. Now, our neighborhood council, including the president, Mark Siegel, Cindy Clegg-Horn, Lydia Grant, Nina Royal, and Mary Benson, who works in the CD seven office, they were witnesses to this. However, on the public record, cameraman Joe Barrett cut and censored my input. I call that censorship. And since then, President Mark Siegel admits that he thinks that this new program is also a scam. And I demand that my conversation with...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Mr. Barajas? Yes, sir.
I'm going to continue with these topics since yesterday, that unless the members of society get the idea across that what you're dealing with is not just a British imperial system, you're dealing with a financial system which is intrinsically imperial. The writings, and there's specific topics that Alexander takes up, Hamilton, but he makes the point and it's very clear, if you don't have manufacturing, if you're cutting back on your ability to create your own resources, your ability to increase the population decreases. And not only that, the whole population begins to deteriorate from the inside. And of course, we see the results from the outside. Now, this is the topic I think our very own representatives from Washington understand. They know that the situation is an empire and it is the same empire that humanity has been facing since Socrates and before. And that's a powerful idea. Now, of course, my ability to communicate this idea is very clear, which is probably because it gets across as it does. But if mankind wishes to survive at this point, because you're dealing with asteroid threats, we saw this in Russia, but the cutbacks to NASA and the inability to cripple ourselves, and when I say ourselves, I'm talking about the whole human species. You are dealing with extinction. And with that, I'll leave it.
Okay, thank you. That concludes general public comment. What other businesses before this body, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred next.
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear. Announcements? Well, let's all rise for journey motions. Everybody, please rise. Mr. Coretts, we will start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Ed Stewart and Lee Tomlin if they would join me at the podium for...
Go right ahead.
Colleagues, today I would like to adjourn in memory of Pat Derby. Pat, along with her longtime partner, Ed Stewart, founded the Performing Animal Welfare Society, or PAWS, in 1984 to rescue and provide humane sanctuary for animals from the exotic and performing animal trades. Pat was a firsthand witness to the treatment of performing animals. Before devoting her life to the PAWS organization, Pat was a show business animal trainer who worked on television programs such as Flipper, Lassie, Gunsmoke, and Doctari. Pat became shocked at the neglect and abuse she found in the performing animal business. And her autobiography, The Lady and Her Tiger, in 1976, was an expose on the harsh treatment of animals in the entertainment industry. Consequently, Pat dedicated her life to humane causes, including founding PAWS, testifying before Congress, and serving on several state committees setting standards for the care and handling of elephants and other exotic species. After her passing, PAWS released a statement saying she was the first to champion the cause of performing animals. And today, because of her tireless work and fierce determination, most animal protection organizations now have captive wildlife programs that address the issues of performing animals. City of Los Angeles owes a special thanks to Pat Derby and PAWS. As one of the sanctuaries residents for the past four years until her passing was the LA Zoo's very own Ruby the Elephant. Thanks to Bob Barker and Pat, Ruby was able to live out the rest of her life. Thanks to Bob Barker and Pat, Ruby was able to live out the rest of her life at the 2,300-acre sanctuary at PAWS. And for this and all of her work and dedication, I'd like to commemorate the life of Pat Derby. And if I could ask if Ed Stewart and Lily Tomlin could each have a few moments to speak.
For a moment.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here. Pat Derby was a hero of mine. She set the standard for the care of elephants in captivity in a way that no one else had ever even attempted. As Councilperson Keretz noted, her sanctuary, which consisted of 2,300 acres, is a totally beautiful, lush, almost as close to the environment that elephants might exist in the wild as she could possibly make it. She always said it would never, the sanctuary would never replace the wild, but at least it would give elephants from zoos and circuses a place to live out their remaining years after decades of abuse and difficult existence in zoos and circuses. And they could live there in peace and harmony with other elephants, friends, and space, and somehow heal. That was her hope. And she said somewhat recently, she's pointing to the sanctuary, she said, "If there's a paradise, this is paradise for the elephants." And we're going to miss her very, very much.
Thank you, Council President Wesson, for allowing us to say a few words. I know this is a little unusual. I was able to, to live with Pat for 37 years, and she was my mentor in the animal world. We were very lucky to have Ruby from Los Angeles Zoo with us for the last four years of her life. She blended perfectly with our elephants. She had a great life up on top of the mountain, and we appreciate the fact that Ruby came with us. It's nice to be here in a venue like this and not be fighting someone, because usually when animal people show up, we're fighting someone. But we are celebrating a warrior, and because Pat was the warrior for elephants in the country and also for lions, tigers, all the rest of the animals who have to live in a captive situation. She fought for animals her entire life, but recently, there've been some accomplishments. There's been some very enlightened decisions that have come out of bodies just like this. And we've been very encouraged over the last five or six years, and it seems to be accelerating. And somewhere, I know that Pat's watching all of us and waiting for our next enlightened decision. So I just want to thank everybody for honoring Pat today. And there's a little bit of Pat Derby now in all the animal people that are here today. So the tenacity lives on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Keretz. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. With your permission, I too will approach the dais.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Alejandro Alex Lenteria. He passed away on March 24th in an auto accident in Acton. Many of us knew Alex as one of the friendly faces working at Homeboy Diner here in City Hall. Alex always had a smile on his face and asked how each and every one of us was doing when we went down there to get our coffee or our bagels or whatever it may be. He was always ready to offer a word of encouragement when needed. Besides his own family and friends, Alex's passing is being mourned by all of the Homeboy Industries team, many of them who are here, from Father Greg Boyle to all the young men and women who are living examples of Homeboy Industries' model, jobs, not jails. Alex was a living example of that. Alex is also being mourned by all of us at City Hall, the City Hall family, who had the pleasure of getting to know him. We know the City Hall Cafe staff is taking this particularly hard, and we certainly want to wish them our best during this very difficult time. A trust fund is being set up by Alex's, for Alex's nine-year-old daughter, Celia, who's with us here today. So far, there's over $7,000 in the fund. A lot of people from all our offices have donated money, as well as people from all over City Hall and outside the building. I want to thank Homeboy Industries for their resolve and counsel during this extremely difficult time to the family. And it was not too long ago as well that Kate Lithencum from the LA Times interviewed Alex for a story she wrote when Homeboy Diner opened two years ago. And after he passed, came back, and she wrote a beautiful, personal story about her friendship with Alex. In the deadline-driven world of journalism, these types of stories are rare, but Kate did a great job of capturing Alex's personality. She relayed why he was such a loved guy by everyone here at City Hall, so we want to thank Kate for that. As we all know, Alex was driving his nine-year-old daughter, Celia, when he lost control of the vehicle. She bravely climbed an embankment and put herself in harm's way to try and find help for her father. Unfortunately, it was too late for Alex, and he passed away at only 35 years of age. But his daughter's love and dedication to her father during his time of need can be seen by her brave actions. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her and Alex's family and friends. And we encourage everyone to contribute to Celia's trust fund. Checks can be made to Edward Jones Investment at City Hall 200 North Spring Street, Suite 200, Los Angeles, California, 90012. In the check, you may write a memo to Celia Lenteria. I want to invite Councilmember Alarcon as well, up here, who also had some, some words to share. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weezer, why don't you bring forth the brave little girl? We all would like to be able to see her face and to let you know just how brave and courageous we truly believe that you are. And I have a feeling that many of us will contribute to the trust fund. Mr. Alarcon.
Yeah, councilmembers, I, actually, I want to thank most of my colleagues. I haven't talked to everybody. At Councilmember Weezer's request, I asked people if they would contribute to the trust fund. So I do want you to know that so far, at least 10 of us are contributing to the trust fund with Mr. Weezer's help. I also want to say to Celia, your dad was a really nice guy. And there isn't a person at City Hall who went to Homeboy who didn't know him because he was always so happy. And I know that my wife and I were always so impressed when we go to, even if it's a McDonald's or Taco Bell or something, and the person at the counter is so happy to be working, and they're so pleasant, and they're encouraging. And, and, and that was your father. He was, he was so happy to be where he was. We all know his story, too. He used to talk about you all the time. And he was always willing to share his story because he believed that people, even through dark times, can rise again to, to experience beautiful things in life. And, and I want you to carry that message in your heart, because I know that, that you, you're going through some dark times. And he would want you to see the light and see the beauty of life around you, even, even though you're experiencing those dark times. All these people know exactly what we're talking about because they've been through it, too. And, and, and with their community surrounding you with love and your help, I know that you're going to be guided to a beautiful future. And, and know this, I lost my son when he was three years old, and I can tell you that you will never lose him. Your father will always be real close in your heart. Just seek him out, and he will guide you. God bless you.
Well said.
We also have another speaker on behalf of the family and Homeboy Industries.
My name is Mirnatayes, and I am the General Manager at Homeboy Diner here at City Hall. I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank our mayor, Antonio Villarreal Rosa, and his staff. Thank you, Councilman Alarcon, Juiza Reyes, Perry Labange, and the staff of the city departments here in City Hall, who have come forward with kind words, tears, professional services, cards, support, and money for Alex's daughter, Celia. I'd like to also personally thank Jenny, Angie, Jerry Lynn, Elba Candy, Peter, Kate, Carla Capri, and so many others who have come and been so wonderful to our staff at this difficult time at the diner. Alex was much more than one-liner at the end of a story of our local news channels. He was a homeboy from the valley who came to us with long hair, a great smile, and a willingness to work. His dream was to make a better life for his daughter, Celia, and to one day get custody of her, and his dream came true in November of 2012. Elsa also took a second job on weekends for a moving company so that I could get Celia what she wants. A couple of months ago, he hurt his back, but he still came to work, and sometimes I'd offer to pick him up at Homeboy where he parked his truck. And he told me that walking was the only thing and the only time he had to meditate. And I would tell him, "Smoking, Alex, is not considering meditating." From the stories I've heard since Alex's passing, I've learned that although City Hall workers show up in three-piece suits, the women nicely dressed with all their makeup on, Alex had a knack for seeing beyond the facade. He instinctively knew if you were having a difficult morning. He would remind us that we all made mistakes. He made chocolate for some, take time to speak to others, and understood the same language that was supposed to be anonymous. He reminded us that we all struggle with our life, that it gets better, and Alec managed to lift a small weight off of all our shoulders as we headed out the diner door. Alex did this simultaneously while making your coffee, handing you your pastry, or grilling your sandwich. Alec managed to draw us in and reminded us that we really have much more in common, that we are not that different. But most importantly, he managed to make us all fall in love with a guy who was from the valley, a homeboy who worked in City Hall. Thank you all for this wonderful honor to Alex.
No, thank, thank you all. Okay, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Lawrence Larry Molinar, retired LAPD Detective III, who passed away on April 14th. I'm joined here today with two of his nieces, Karine, who is employed with the CLA's office, and Molly, who is also with the mayor's office. And so I'd like to go on and say that Larry was raised in Lincoln Heights, attended Lincoln High School. He is the youngest of Amelia and Ignacio Molinar, whom both preceded him in death. Following high school, Larry served as a member of the US Navy from 1968 through 1970. In '71, he began his career with the City of Los Angeles as a jailer at Wilshire Division. In '74, he proudly graduated from the Los Angeles Police Academy. As a patrol officer, he served Hollenbeck, Southeast, Northeast, Rampart in '77. In '93, he was promoted to detective, serving South Bureau Homicide, Detective Headquarters, Northeast and Southeast Divisions. In 1996, he was promoted to Detective III. 2002, Larry retired after serving 30 years of dedicated service for the City of Los Angeles. Following his retirement, he participated with fellow retirees as a member of the Old Blue Baker-to-Vegas team. He participated in three Baker-to-Vegas runs and was hoping to participate in his fourth this year. On April 14th, he succumbed to an eighth-month battle of pancreatic cancer. Larry survived by his wife, Elizabeth, of 35 years, two stepdaughters, four sons, his brother-in-law, Elias, who's a former CRA employee, and his two nieces are here today, Karine and Molly, and also a host of other family members. Funeral services will be Monday, April 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. at Rose Hill Cemetery in Whittier.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, as we, so eloquently, when you spoke of the tragedy in Boston the other day, I just did get word of all the victims of the tragedy in Boston. As we know, Martin Richards, eight years old, who climbed high on a little guardrail to see the runners. And his family was also tragically injured, but Martin's lost his life. Crystal Campbell, 29-year-old, loved by many people in her community. And then the Liu Lingzeng, an exchange student from China, student, mathematics graduate student, statistics, who came here to be part of the American scene and learn, but also to be part of that Boston marathon. May we all remember those to this day.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And you will find out where we send those. Okay, is there any more business before, Mr. Weezer?
Just an announcement that Energy and Environment Committee would begin, will begin at 2 o'clock instead of the 1:30 regular scheduled time.
Okay, all right. This council meeting's adjourned.